I'm going to call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. It's a regular meeting, February 14th, 2019. It is 7:03 PM. We're in the MLVA Elementary School Library. I take a roll call.
Yeah. All right. Tom McGinn.
Susan Roth.
Yes, started.
Rich Genong.
Matt Redwood.
And we have on the agenda, first off, approval of agenda. To the agenda, we have the approval of minutes for January 24th. Citizens comment, pending applications, there are four. Ledgewood Meadows subdivision, Raptor Falls, Runts Run Dog daycare, and KKW Water District Storage Tank. We have new applications. There are two. The Arundel Farm Stand, which is a pre-application, and Oak Ridge Terrace, which is a major subdivision with a pre-application as well. Then we have other business. And when we're done, we go home.
I'm telling you, it's like, kaboom.
So I need a, I need a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah. Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes of January 24th, 2019.
I think we need to add Susan Roth to the attendees.
That's true, yeah.
I know.
You did it deliberately.
Okay.
Bring us the switch next time. I think just, I think we're missing a verb too. The first sentence of the second, of the first paragraph on the second page.
Can we ask?
Oh wait. Yeah.
That's, that's the only change I saw.
Is there anything else that anyone sees? Hearing none, we need a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I move that we approve the minutes.
As amended.
As amended.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Yeah.
It is unanimous. Now we have before a citizen comment. This is the time when citizens of the town of Arundel are allowed to bring to the attention of the board anything that is not on the agenda. If you have something you would like to address that is not listed on the agenda, please, I guess, I don't know if, does anybody have anything they want to say, first off? Okay.
Going wide, going twice.
Seeing no... No, this is, this is for the com... Okay. Hearing none, we will close the citizens' comment and move right into applications. The first pending application is Ledgewood Meadows subdivision. The discussion is on the expiration of the subdivision approval. And at the last meeting, we asked Mr. Labby to provide us with documentation showing that he had met the substantial completion standard. Do you have that paperwork?
I do.
Do you, do you know what the total on that is by any chance?
The invoice is forty-nine thousand. Labby is conservative, thirty-three hundred.
So fifty-two thousand.
I have made a deposit of twelve thousand on that stand.
Okay. That's sixty-four, and I believe the original amount was...
One sixty-one?
One sixty-one, so you've got forty-eight thousand. At thirty percent, that would be sufficient. This does appear to meet those standards. Unless I, unless I can't add.
You're the teller for sure.
Well, he has the number written down at forty-nine, which is more than the forty-eight we need.
Okay.
So I think it's safe to assume that...
As individual invoices, not due a whole lot.
I'll give these to the town planner, and we can add them into the file.
I'm sorry, where is he at right now?
I would, he's at roughly sixty-four thousand dollars.
So did you...
And he needed to get up over the forty-eight. So I think we, we need a motion to, to acknowledge that Mr. Labby has met the substantial completion aspect of the, of the ordinance and that he's allowed to continue forward.
I close someone.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, Raptor Falls, a plenary site plan review. A proposal to construct an eighteen-hole miniature golf course with a dinosaur theme, complete with range buildings and associated off-site parking on an eight-acre site formerly Frits Tire located at nineteen-twelve Portland Road, tax map fifteen, lot twelve, in the BI district. Clifford Getkowski and Bree Duffy-King are the owner applicants. And I believe you have before you the lighting plan review?
Yes.
Indicating that with the help of Mr. Stockman, that he was able to successfully get the lighting plan taken care of. And I believe the deed is set, is it not?
The deed is set.
The deed is set. Those were the two items that we had had a, had a problem with. Is there...
And we also have the stormwater PBR from the DEP.
Okay, so we do have, you, you have submitted to the...
They have received.
They have received. Even better. Does the board have any questions for the applicant?
So when are you going to open? Gameplay, gameplay.
As soon as possible.
In the spring, I hope.
Oh, yeah.
But the gameplay, yeah, like...
We'll be able to break ground as soon as the ground falls, basically, they can start working away, and then it's a six-day week, and we can construct a course.
So probably, probably in May.
Yeah, maybe June.
Probably a little, maybe June.
Yeah, it's okay.
June-ish.
It'll be after Memorial Day, that's tourist season starts.
Yeah.
So, yep. Eureka. That's all I can say.
It's, yeah, it's, it's been a long haul. But I'm glad that you were able to get everything together.
Yeah.
Hearing, hearing no questions from the board, I'm going to proceed forward with findings of fact.
Yeah.
The town of Arundel, Arundel Planning Board, findings of fact and motion for approval, Raptor Falls Miniature Golf Course. Whereas on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, the Arundel Planning Board received a plenary site application from Clifford Getkowski and Bree Duffy-King to construct an eighteen-hole miniature golf course with a dinosaur theme, complete with range building and associated off-site parking on an eight-acre site located at nineteen-twelve Portland Road, tax map fifteen, lot twelve, in the BI district. Whereas on October thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public site walk of the project. Whereas on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, the planning board determined the application complete and scheduled a public hearing on November eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Whereas on November eighth, two thousand and eighteen, the planning board conducted a public hearing in compliance with Land Use Ordinance Section ten, six, three, three, and the board deferred action to and until the lighting peer review was submitted and a number of deed and topographic discrepancies were corrected. Whereas on November twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, the applicants requested and received a thirty-day extension to resolve outstanding survey and property line inconsistencies. Whereas on January tenth, two thousand and nineteen, the applicants requested and received a second extension to address lighting and property line issues. And whereas the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact and notice of decision. Finding of fact number one, the owners of the property are Richard and Pauline Fritz, and the applicants are Clifford Getkowski and Bree Duffy-King. Number two, the property is located at nineteen-twelve Portland Road, tax map fifteen, lot twelve, in the BI district. Number three, the property is seven point five eight acres in size. Number four, the property currently contains three structures and was the former site of Fritz's Tire and Timeless Classics Vehicle Repair and Tire Store. All three buildings will be demolished and removed. Number five, the applicant proposes to construct an eighteen-hole miniature golf course supported by a six-hundred-and-forty-square-foot clubhouse designed to dispense equipment and sell refreshments and souvenirs. The facility will have a dinosaur theme containing a number of animatronic-scale dinosaurs, including a twenty-foot brachiosaurus. The facility will also contain cascading waterfalls and will be lighted for, excuse me, and will be lighted for evening golfing. Number six, the proposed miniature golf course qualifies as a commercial recreational facility and is listed in the Land Use Ordinance Section six, six, one, twenty, as a permitted use in the BI district. Number seven, the original Fritz's Tire building was located only ten feet from the front property line. The clubhouse will be constructed in the footprint of the original building and thirty-five feet from the front property line, thereby rendering the new structure legally non-conforming in accordance with Land Use Ordinance Section four, eight, one, one. Number eight, the applicant's proposed site plan is compliant with the dimensional requirements of Section six, 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 four. Number nine, wastewater disposal will be accommodated by a new onsite septic system, and an HHE two-hundred has been prepared by Brady Frick of Albert Frick Associates dated eight, thirteen, eighteen. Number ten, portable water supply will be provided by Kennebunk, Kennebunk Port and Wells Water District. Number eleven, underground utilities will be provided by a drop from the existing CNP pole on the west side of Route One. Number twelve, Raptor Falls will be served by a fifty-four-space parking lot, including three ADA spaces, and will gain access to Route One via an enlarged entry in the same location as a driveway into the former Fritz Tire facility. The applicant has received a driveway opening waiver from the main department of transportation and has not been required to conduct a traffic study by the MDOT. Number thirteen, the applicant has submitted a stormwater management plan prepared by AC Engineering and Consulting, which all onsite runoff will be collected into a central detention basin located in the southeast corner of the site and discharged at pre-development rates into the Route One drainage facilities, eventually discharging into the Kennebunk River. The main Department of Environmental Protection has issued an approval and stormwater permit by rule for the plan dated December twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Number fourteen, the applicant has submitted a lighting plan reviewed and amended by J&amp;M Lighting Design and dated February fourth, two thousand and nineteen, and demonstrated to be in compliance with Section five-ten and Section six, six, five, two of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. Number fifteen, evidence has been supplied to the planning board that the animatronic dinosaurs will not make noises that exceed fifty decibels at the property line. Number sixteen, the Arundel Deputy Fire Chief has submitted a letter to the planning board that the project is within five hundred feet of a pressure hydrant and is in compliance with Section five point seven of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. Number seventeen, the applicant has shown adequate evidence of right title and interest in the property. Number eighteen, the applicant has submitted a landscape plan that will screen the parking and activity areas in compliance with the requirements of the Land Use Ordinance Section five-nine and six, six, five, four. Nineteen, engineering documentation submitted in support of this application includes, includes sheets C-one through C-ten, site plan for, set for Raptor Falls, prepared by AC Engineering and Consulting, dated September thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, with revisions to February seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Drainage reports prepared for Raptor Falls Miniature Golf Course, prepared by AC Engineering and Consulting, and dated August seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Main HHE two-hundred subsurface wastewater design prepared by Brady Frick and dated eight, thirteen, eighteen, and peer review of the proposed sighting, site lighting by J&amp;M Lighting Design Incorporated dated January seventh, two thousand and nineteen, and February fourth, two thousand and nineteen. Revised lighting plan, photometric map, and fixture specifications prepared by J&amp;M Lighting Design Incorporated and dated January twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Conformance with site plan approval criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria of Section ten, six, four of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. The proposed, number one, the proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in Sections four, eight, one, five, six, six, and ten, six of this ordinance. Number two, the proposed project has received its main DEP stormwater permit and applicable MDOT permits. Number three, the proposed project does not unnecessarily impact public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and neighborhood. Number four, the proposed site will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. Number five, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff from the site during a twenty-five-year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. Number six, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or along Route One. Number seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, or important cultural resources. Number eight, the proposed project will not produce undue noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction, or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of life on surrounding parcels. Number nine, the proposed project will have a positive fiscal impact on the municipal government. Therefore, be it resolved, based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the plenary site plan application of Clifford Getkowski and Bree Duffy-King to construct an eighteen-hole miniature golf course with a dinosaur theme and clubhouse buildings and associated off-site parking on a seven-point-five-eight-acre site located at nineteen-twelve Portland Road, tax map fifteen, lot twelve, in the BI district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall install all soil erosion and control measures on the approved plan set prior to the commencement of earth excavation, except in areas of ledge removal. Number two, in accordance with Land Use Ordinance Section ten, seven, two, the applicant shall submit a performance surety in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the town planner to ensure all work is completed in accordance with the approved plans. Number three, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the applicant's engineer and lighting consultant shall certify that all improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plans. So approved by the Arundel Planning Board this fourteenth day of November, two thousand and nineteen. I need a motion.
Both will be accepted as read and written.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
All seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded for approval. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Marty?
One question. So the fire chief said within five hundred feet, isn't that a, a new distance that we're not used to? Usually it's been a thousand.
I think he was just saying that we, that the hydrant is five hundred feet away.
Okay, okay. I'm just asking for clarity of the question.
Yeah, no, because you're right. The ordinance calls for it to be a thousand. I think the fire chief is just saying it's five hundred feet away.
Okay, I'm just, I don't want to set a new, start it in something new.
Yeah, no. I, I don't think the selectmen would like that if we had to have every five hundred feet of hydrant on Route One. Not if they have to pay for it. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous? Congratulations.
Yay.
Are you excited now?
Yeah, I will.
Yeah, might as well.
Yeah, we need to reach out, please.
This one, right?
And I believe we have to sign these.
Yep.
Those are the milas that we'll have to sign.
Oh, the milas, okay.
You guys aren't signing this one here?
No.
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 We have goods to go.
No, you didn't need to buy one. Who wants to buy an easel?
We bought it a few, a few meetings ago.
Hey, they could use it, they could use it there for their specials on their, um...
Same special?
Yeah, I know facts.
We'll sign the milas now or later?
I'll just sign the milas after we come down.
There you go. So we get home in two hours. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, the, the business, the new business application that was submitted with this, do I need to do another process for that, or how does that work?
No, that goes to the court of enforcement office.
Okay, so I could talk about that or...
Well, you want to talk to him about building permits.
Okay, he'll do it.
He'll do it.
Okay, just cheers, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks everyone.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll look to both. Item number three, Runts Run Dog daycare.
Yeah, will do. Thanks.
This is a proposal to establish a pet daycare center in an existing riding stable located at four ninety-six Limerick Road, tax map twenty-seven, lot two, in the R-one district. Kristen Woodward is the owner applicant. As you have before you, lots of stuff. Mr. Planner, is there anything you need?
I think I've put things in notes. You folks, I don't think I've had a discussion about this since your site walk.
No, we have not.
That's correct.
So the objective here is to go over the site walk, and then I had some notes, and you, this is a determination of, if there's anything else you want the applicant to provide in the condition of the case.
I'm trying to think. Marty, this is Susan, will you be at the time? I can't, I'm sorry, I pulled the blank. So it was our five of us?
Is there anything you want to discuss that before we wrap up?
Comments on, on the site walk, anyone?
So Todd, are we going to go through what's required for our...
Yes, yes. But before we did that, I just wanted to get any comments from the, from the board. Because you usually make any comments if there's anything else you would like from the applicant, if they're following me after the site walk.
Well, she was going to provide her, you know, licenses, training certificates, and stuff like that. That was something to discuss.
I do have my training certificates. I did not bring a license for I have it.
I have actually seen that license, so. Okay, well, we'll do.
Well, I, quite honestly, when, when we did the site walk, I was rather dismayed. I questioned whether or not the fence is sufficient to keep animals in, in the condition it's in. I had a dog that would be able to clear that fence without any problem at all. And he was a combination lab shepherd mix, and he could clear six to eight feet without any trouble. So I, and not having rollers or anything on the top that would prevent him from climbing up, made me wonder whether or not that fence would do the job that it's supposed to do. The other problem I had, that room that you're saying that in bad weather the dogs will stay in, has no heat. Those, those animals are going to get really cold in it.
No, that, that's for them to play in. Where the crates are is where they're going to come in for rest periods, and that will be heated.
Where, where the crates are, yes. But if it's bad, if it's inclement weather outside, then they're going to be going into that other room to play in. I'm just not sure that that's, I'm not sure, I don't know, I'll be honest, I don't know how that would stand up. I was just troubled by the fact that there was no heat in that room. That room was cold. And I, you know, that, that bothered me.
Well, I would add too, that you said you were going to order some, you were going to provide some kind of barrier between the crates so that you didn't have a lot of fence fighting.
Right.
But also, there was no way to clean under the crates. The dogs would be in the crates if they defecate or if they go to the bathroom. You didn't really seem to have adequate room to move them out of the crates and a way to clean the floor underneath them. So they'd be sitting right on their crates, right on the floor, right on whatever waste they had, you know, eliminated. And it just, the whole space just seemed inadequately outfitted to really take care of dogs for an extended period of time, in terms of the way the crates were lined up, you know, ways in which you could clean the crates, way, the ways that you could keep the dogs separated and from engaging with each other as they moved in and out of the different spaces. To me, it was, you know, just incredibly tight. And, I don't know, I just, just didn't seem to have enough of the, what, the structures in place to run a facility where the handlers and the dogs themselves could be well taken care of during the course of the day. So I sort of felt the same way Rich did, that it was, it was lacking. That's not to say that it couldn't eventually get there, but I think it's got a long way to go.
Well, what are your suggestions? What, what more do you want me to do?
Well, I just, you know, you've got all these crates, these wire crates that are all up against each other. If you have any dogs of any size with any kind of bravado or aggression, they're going to be fence fighting full time. I mean, you'd have to put, you know, a solid barrier between those crates. And every time you take them out, they're all going to be visible to one another from the front of their wire crates, and you're going to have total mayhem if you've got aggressive dogs in there going in and out, either to the backyard or to the play area or whatever. And there's no way to clean that space if you have dogs that are ill or have the runs or, you know, are adequately housebroken, you know. What do you do? Do you pick up all the crates? Is there a place to, you know, wash off the floor? I mean, you know, how do you do, deal with that? I mean, accidents happen. Dogs get sick. They go to the bathroom on the floor. The crates aren't even really elevated off of the concrete floor, so they're right in it. So, you know, I just...
If I remember correctly, a couple of the crates are off the floor. They're on top of other gates, other crates. There's a couple of the large dogs, they, if I, I may be wrong, I may be...
No, they're not.
Well, I don't remember that, but...
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Because that would be just, you know, untenable to have dogs on top of each other. So that was, you know, my feeling.
Well, I don't know too much about, I don't know anything about proper way to run a facility like that. It sounds like you have some insight that maybe the rest of us don't have. But some of those issues you mentioned seem to me to be easily taken care of by, by raising up the crates, perhaps by the use of four-by-fours with trays underneath that, that would be some problem and some, some kind of blocking system between crates, but...
I don't think it's insurmountable. I just think that it's tight for the number of wire crates that you've got in there. I'm surprised that you chose wire crates as opposed to barycannals or something else. And so there's absolutely, you know, complete visibility either in one direction or the other between the dogs. And I don't know about you, if you've ever had an aggressive dog, but when they see each other and they're going and they all go off and whatever, you know that it's very hard to control what's going on there. So, you know, maybe there is, there are ways to elevate the crates and adequately clean the floor if accidents happen and, but...
I don't know if you ever...
Right now, as it stands, it's not sufficient.
I don't know that you could ever set things up so they can't see each other at some point. Right?
No, I think you, sure you can. Because you have solid barriers between the, the runs. So these aren't runs, these are crates. And these aren't solid crates, these are wire crates. So when dog runs, you have solid barriers between the runs. And you often have drains in each one of the runs. And you have, you can have a wire or a chain link gate, but you can often... And you have, you can have a wire, um, or a chain link gate where you can often slip a panel in those gates that make the dogs visible to one another. And there's no access to the outside for any of these dogs in the wire crates, so there's no indoor, outdoor, so they can't go out to leave themselves. And so even if you put a tray under a wire crate, it's, it makes it really hard to, you know, clean it cause that space is really tight. So those are really big wire crates, so in, even to pull out a tray that is a reasonable size to slip under those crates, where would you, how would you pull them out? You would, if you pulled them out all the way, you'd be into another crate. So they were all lined up like this and then they went like this and like this. And the walkway between the crates was fairly narrow, so I don't know how you pull those, I don't, you know, I don't know what you would do. Am I making sense?
Oh, I understand.
So, you know, if you have non-aggressive dogs and you know who you're taking and.
Well, that, that's, I was just waiting till you finish, but, uh, I will be interviewing, you know, people and their dogs and I'm not going to take aggressive dogs. That may limit the amount of people that I have, but I, I, I'm not gonna take aggressive dogs. And the dogs are gonna be out the majority of the time. Yes, dogs have accidents, you know, they can be sick, they can have diarrhea, but it, you know, I'm assuming not more than a couple at a time will be sick. And those crates, I have moved them around quite a bit in there and I can take one completely out quite easily. They slide right out. I can take it right outside and hold it out.
I would have to go back and see it rearranged so that, you know, there was space enough between the crates so that you could create a barrier and a way in which you could clean the floor underneath or pull out a tray or anything like that and, um, you know, you get an unneuter dog in there, a male and.
And that's not gonna, they're gonna be straight unneuter.
requirement.
Okay, I, I agree with Laura, what you're saying, and I also agree, it's not all that much to be able to, uh, to, to deal with all those, but to put some type of plywood or something in between and lift, lift up the crates. It is a really tight space and, and I, I can just imagine one dog setting up all the rest of them and they were all just a couple of feet away from each other or side by side going left to right. The, the other thing that, that, that seems like it just hasn't been dealt with is, is that indoor room. Right now, it's just unfinished spaces.
Uh, I don't know if you recall, that's something that was added, I hadn't, I was gonna do that later. So I've just started now trying to get that ready.
Well, you, you've said many times that they mostly be out, outdoors.
Yes.
The, the, but the weather won't always allow for that.
That's true.
So would they just stay, remain in the crates?
No, no, they'd be in the, in the indoor area. I, I, they would probably all go out at some point, you know, most, a lot of dogs don't wanna use, go to bathroom on a cement floor. Some dogs won't, some dogs will hold it all day, cause they don't wanna go inside.
So will you, will you be having play here indoors?
Yes.
And where would that fit?
In the room next door, that doesn't have to be yet.
On the other side.
Yeah, I think, I think some work needs to be done.
It does, it does, that is not, that's nowhere near finished.
But you say your plan is to also offer grooming?
No.
Sorry, didn't I just read that sometimes, that your hope is to have grooming in addition to everything else?
Yeah, I see.
At Casillas, I didn't see any tub water facilities or.
Was, was there water, um, coming, I forget, was there a sink in the room?
No.
You'd be, probably have to bring in a lot of water to clean.
No, I have water comes from the house.
From the house?
Yeah, right in the back of the house.
So how would you clean if you had to bring water from the house, there's, is there a hose?
There's a hose right there, yeah.
Now, if I understand this correctly, your, your plan when the dogs are inside is to have them caged.
Yes.
The ordinance says that you can't do that unless they're aggressive. We don't want the animals being caged unless they're aggressive and you said you're not gonna have aggressive dogs. So you should not be bringing the dogs in from outside and sticking them into a cage.
So they're not supposed to have any rest?
No, they can have rest periods, but if, unless you're saying that the only time they're going to be inside is either when they are eating or when they are resting, is that, is that what you are telling us?
For the most part, yeah, I mean, I would be putting all of the dogs out all at once cause some of them aren't gonna get along with each other. But for the most part, they, they will be alternating, you know, one group then another group throughout the day.
Where will the group that is inside be at? Will they be in the playroom or will they be in their cages?
Either or.
The ordinance says you can't put them in the cage. You can put them in there to feed, you can put them in there to rest, but if they're inside and there's another group outside, the, the animals are not supposed to be caged, you would have to put them in the playroom.
That's what daycares do.
That's not what the ordinance says. And quite honestly, you should be aware of that, you helped write the ordinance.
I think I was looking at the ancillary services.
Yeah.
And it says you're not planning any of this time. But pet grooming and pet training are among those, some of those ancillary services.
Laura, there, Laura, there's, there's no overnight accommodations, the species are limited to dogs and that's it. And there is no other ancillary activity that the applicant's proposing. There's no interspecies conflicts, it's around any other species besides dogs.
That there's no caging of the dogs.
That's what I'm looking for.
It says it in land use ordinance in section nine three three three.
Well, that should probably be changed, cause that really doesn't make sense, I mean, you have that. A place to put a dog, a crate or, you know, something, a dog run or.
Yeah, that's what, what you have to do.
Makes it virtually impossible unless you have free dog.
Some cage?
Nine three three.
Cage, yeah.
That's a cage.
Dogs shall not be caged individually except for in an area in which aggressive dogs can be separated.
So there you go.
Now, what's interesting is if you look, I mean, this whole thing's being, being established by the Guidelines for Standards of Care in Animal Shelter, it references that in section N. And what we're talking about here is primary enclosures. And, uh, that's what the guidelines refer to and they do recognize crates as potential in, in primary enclosures, but they add performance space standards for primary enclosures and they read, "Primary enclosures must provide sufficient space to allow each animal or dog of the species to make normal postural adjustments, to turn freely and to easily stand, sit, stretch, move their head without touching the top of the enclosure. Lie in a comfortable position with limbs extended, move about in a soon comfortable posture for feeding, drinking, urinating, and defecating." And that's the standard.
There isn't sufficient room for that in the wire crates that are there at the present time. That's not to say they couldn't create runs out of, to make it work.
That's the quote directly from the guidelines.
So the, the guidelines are incorporated in wholesale, either the ordinance?
Yeah, they reference them.
They reference them, but they're, do they incorporate them?
No, they're too big.
Well, how do you know what's in and what's out?
You look at the guidelines.
The guidelines are booklet.
Right, but what I'm asking is, is the booklet incorporated wholesale into the ordinance?
No.
No.
It isn't?
No.
So what parts of the, of the pamphlet or the guidelines are in the ordinance?
It's, well, basically. Uh, let's see. It says, "Indoor portion of the dog daycare operation shall be of sufficient size to accommodate the maximum number of dogs that the operation will care for at any one time and meet the minimum space and design standards as established by the Guidelines for Standards of Care in Animal Shelter," as published by the Association of Shelter Veterinarians, I believe.
So that discrete part of the guidelines is incorporated within the ordinance, but that's it.
Yeah.
And do they give dimensions for the, uh, each run or, um, area?
No, they don't.
Or size of, per size of dog?
They give the performance thing of dogs should be able to sit, you know, urinate, stand, move around, be able to turn around when the primary enclosure is.
So all your crates are the same size pretty much, aren't they?
There, uh, there are two, they're all extra large except for two, little ones.
So what are, do you know offhand what the dimensions are of those cages?
I don't know if you have the packet, but.
Yeah, they are.
The dimensions are on there.
They're in your notes.
I think it's forty.
Have you, have you, have you used this as a resource, do you know?
I don't.
Have you used this as a resource, Kristen?
What is that?
This is the Guidelines for Standards of Care in Animal Shelter.
It's downloadable to me.
No?
The latest, the latest one was two thousand and ten. And this is.
So that's, okay, that's not a resource that you've, uh, looked at?
You know, and the other thing I was thinking about is what we went through for the capable companion in terms of dealing with dog waste. And, you know, I don't think you're supposed to throw that, uh, away either for the Rundle Dump or like for instance, Oceanside won't take it. So, you're not supposed to put it in your trash cans, no, to throw away. They make a, it's a specific thing in the, and now they've just been bought out by Casella and they make a point of telling you that you're not supposed to dispose of dog waste.
The applicant referenced the contract that they have with Oceanside to pick up the waste.
Then it must be a separate contract, cause.
Okay, then we should see if.
They made a specific, I got a notice from Casella when they took over Oceanside.
Okay.
That that was one of the things they wanted to make sure.
Then we should see a copy of that contract.
Yeah, I don't have a contract yet, I called them and asked them what their prices were and if they would pick it up and they said they will.
Did you get that in writing from them, Kristen?
Did that for general, uh, trash pickup or specifically for dog waste?
No, regular pickup.
Do they know what they're?
Did you tell them that there was a kennel?
Yeah, I told them it was a daycare.
Okay, cause when I told them it was a kennel, cause I was gonna have them come pick up from New Hampshire as well, they said nope, they wouldn't, they didn't look at what they would do. Waste management will make.
Do they have any different?
They wouldn't take it in Maine either.
No, I, I didn't know, I didn't know how New Hampshire made, made a.
It's just their practice not to take it, Waste Management, instance, has a specific pickup for that kind of stuff for kennels and whatever, to dispose of animal waste.
I didn't know that.
Can I see here the size of the kennels?
Yeah, it's, it's.
And, oh, I see here in, in the blue, but I don't see in the application itself and that's, that's all that was saying. Cause I looked through the application. I don't see it. I, I haven't looked through that section yet.
Oh wait, Kristen, your inspection report is in your packet.
Mr. Chief, don't mind, I just have a question about the, the fencing with.
Absolutely.
So, um, there was no screening really on the fencing, what were your plans?
Kristen, can you get this, uh, cut sheet on that, a catalog sheet on, on that for the manufacturer?
Yeah.
Curiosity on that material like that, is that put on the outside?
Yes.
So that little puppy, so the puppies won't scratch it on the inside and make a, a shredded mesh?
That's what they are, that's, that's what she's admitting.
Okay.
That, that also directions she's.
I saw this in a different column.
Now.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm curious about the, being caged individually, I just thought that was common practice if you had a kennel up into it, you'd get the wrong little, little pen.
Of runs.
Of runs.
Run is, but run is not a cage.
It's a cage, okay. I don't, I don't know the difference.
Well, sure, cause a run is.
When it goes outside.
Or if it's long or something.
These, these, they're just stuck in, like, two foot block.
On the larger foot feet.
Yeah, no, that, that's not a, for some reason I was thinking that this one here was doubled.
I think I had one sitting on the.
Excuse me, that's, that's what I was thinking. So, anything else from the board? I, we've covered a lot of stuff and there's, there's a number of issues that I think are gonna have to get addressed.
Well, the, that, the fence screening will be sufficient. I love all the cage, but, but I wanna just go back to the, the indoor play area. It just doesn't seem with ten dogs, um, there's really no good space. Except for the cages.
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about that because I don't think that there's enough space for, if, if you've got ten dogs in that room, nobody's getting exercise and somebody's gonna have a fight.
Possibly.
And to me, that's, that's problematic. I am concerned about the fencing because the ordinance requires that the fencing be screened out in the yard so that.
She just, she won't have.
She's gonna have that, but that's okay, because I, you know, I wanted to bring that up. I'm, I am concerned about the height of the fencing. Now, you put in six feet of fencing and added two more feet on top of that, but I'm not sure, I, I don't know how secure that is, quite honestly.
Eight feet?
No, there's a six foot fence and then there's a two foot addition that was taped, taped up on top of it. So I'm not sure how secure that would be.
Eight, eight feet is, is a requirement, I should, if it's eight feet tall, then it's covered.
But it didn't look like it was permanently fixed in the ground. I, I, there were, you know, wooden somethings that were holding it up.
With the right to name, yeah.
You got a big dog that was breaking through that.
Can I just...
I don't think so. That's like jumping over the iron in the door there, I don't see that.
Well, too, um, the capable canine, she only has a six foot fence.
She might. I, I don't remember.
I...
Yeah, she might.
But the supports for the fence were not, I don't think, as strong as they could be.
Securely.
As secure as...
You know, if, if, if we said six foot capable canine, then I think we need to say six foot of runt.
They were, they were a different strain or something.
Yeah, but she had, she, she now has eight feet of fence. If it were still six foot, the ordinance would require coyote rollers on top of it.
Which is why she extended it.
But if it's eight foot...
Well, that's the board's decision to determine whether or not, because the standard says, any portion of the dog daycare facility shall be fenced to a height of six feet of chain length and so-called coyote rollers or eight feet of suitable fencing to prevent dogs from escaping. The question is, is it suitable fencing? So.
Well, it wasn't chain length.
Six, six feet of chain length. If it's six, if it's six feet, it has to be chain length with coyote rollers.
Or eight feet of suitable fencing.
Or eight feet of suitable fencing, fencing, and it doesn't define suitable. From, from the point of view of dogs getting away, you have an eight foot fence. The dog might be able to clear an eight foot fence? That's a serious dog. That's a dog I want to bring to my house and have for a pet.
He'd be clutching the birds out of the bird feed.
Boy, almost, small dogs aren't gonna jump over it, they're gonna dig under it.
Yeah.
So it's, it's gonna be really hard to, to, to do anything in terms of the escaping, which is why we said, you know, it's gotta be eight feet so that they can't jump over it or six foot with coyote rollers, so they climb up and they, they're not gonna be able to go.
I would have to go back and take a look because I didn't think this fence was, I don't know about the height, but it just didn't seem that sturdy in the way it was installed. So you get a few big dogs that are playing and, you know, it's, it's easy to go under or create some way to get around the barrier if it's not firmly in the ground. That was my comment. I, I don't know about the height, six feet probably would do it.
Yeah, one, one thing I'm, I'm listening to Karen, we're saying, large dog and everything else, what actually, even like with the size of the cages, I mean, or anything else? You might have a medium dog in a large cage so that it has more than, I mean, has more than accessibility for maneuverability and everything else. Let's put it this way, you aren't gonna put a, a, a greyhound in one of those large cages because he's too big and anything else to fit it into anything.
Well, there, there are some dogs that are not gonna fit in that large too.
I mean, more extra large, I mean, uh...
Even, even the extra large, some dogs aren't, my, the Rhodesian Ridgeback Hound mix that I had would not fit into one of those. He was a hundred and twenty-seven pounds and he stood knee high. He was just a big dog. He, he's not gonna fit in there. My dog was an exception to the rule.
Back to the fence, I, when I looked at it, I saw the, the extension and, and it, it seemed adequate to me. I didn't get close to it.
I can't picture the extension, but if it, it's, you guys say it was there and my mind is just going, okay, I don't recognize it because I didn't walk up close to it and look.
I thought it was high enough, I just didn't think it was sturdy enough.
I'm gonna have to defer to the two of you in terms of your judgment on the fence.
I'd have to go back and really look at the fence more carefully, but...
Okay, so...
The indoor area is definitely...
I think, I think the board is, is concerned about a couple of issues and the board should tell the applicant what they would expect for an answer on some of these questions so we can give a direction.
Yep, I, I agree. And that's, because well, some of these we've already, we've asked about, blocking on the, on the crates, flooring on the crates, or getting it up off the floor.
So trays work?
I don't see why trays wouldn't work. You can slide a tray underneath and slide it back out, but I don't see why those not.
Well, some of them come with trays.
Yeah.
Integriton.
And trays inside, right?
Inside, yeah, they're, they're integral to the, or else actually they're, yeah, they're inside and you can slip them out.
But to clean those wire crates and possibly clean out underneath them?
Yep.
You'd almost have to take them out and disinfect them and clean them and you'd certainly have to do that between dogs, which means every time you get a new dog and you're gonna put him in a crate that he hasn't occupied before, you have to clean it and disinfect it and the wire crates are much more difficult to keep clean than like a very kennel, which is, you know...
What's a very kennel?
It's, it's a solid, I'll get you a picture, it's...
I, I have never heard of it, that's why I'm asking.
It's like the transport.
It's like a transport.
So we, we need...
But a lot of kennels use, use the very kennel.
My dogs hate them. They'd rather be able to see.
Really? Because mine would rather be in an enclosed thing where they feel, you know, like they're in a den than they are in a exposed wire crate.
Oh, okay, so they, they have, they have their own room.
It's like they're a cubby hole, yes. And you can actually get in there and clean it out because it's a solid bottom?
Yeah.
And disinfect it and everything else like that as opposed to a wire button.
What's the biggest ones of those?
The seven hundreds?
What are the dimensions?
They're pretty big. They fit a big shepherd, they'll fit, you can ship a dane, a small dane in those. You know, a lot of it has to do with how much clearance they have.
This is a learning experience for us too, this thing.
Yeah.
You know, it's not like we, we do this all the time, I mean, uh...
Okay, she, I just want to check off my list. You're gonna get us information related to the opacity for this fence screening, correct?
I think, uh...
You guys, you guys are satisfied with the fencing the way it is?
I'd have to come out and...
I have to, I have to take the word for it because I don't...
I, I thought the outside fencing was fine.
Okay.
It, to me seemed like the, the best part of the design.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I don't know, it seems to me that this is out there and it looks like it's got a good pedigree, this information. I think it'd be sensible for you to look at it. Like just reading this, I've, I've learned a lot and some of it addresses some of the concerns that my colleague here on the board has raised. I understand better now, listening to Susan and reading this, and I think you could benefit from that too.
Do you have an extra copy?
Yeah.
You can download it free on, on the internet.
But I also, but I also, I would also say this...
Those are experts, excerpts set up all the time.
Oh.
This is all the time. But you can read excerpts. I, I, I gave you pieces of, certainly, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is just a portion of it that'll give you an idea of, of what we're looking at and you can get the, like Ted said, you can get the entire thing online. You can either have this or... They give, they give you the website for it.
One of the words that they use to describe the area where you keep your, the dog is compartment. And a wire crate is not a compartment because I think the definition of the compartment is an enclosed...
Partially opaque.
Partially opaque space. And it has no wire bottoms or because of sanitation reasons.
That's also not good for their feet too.
Well, it's, right, even if you have a, then you have beds on there, but if they go to the bathroom, I don't know, it's a, it's a big mess.
So I...
You don't put rubber sheets on?
No, but if it's on the, on the dogs. Dangerous.
From, from my perspective, the, the issue is, you know, I'll, I'll defer to these guys in terms of the fencing and say, you know, they probably got a better look at it than I do, but I am concerned about the cages and the fact that the ordinance says you cannot keep those animals caged up. If they're outside and they're playing or if they're in the playroom or if you bring them in to feed them or to give them some rest, that's acceptable, but you can't leave them in the cages all day. If it's bad weather outside, then it's bad weather outside. You're not gonna fit ten dogs in that little room that you have.
I, I would never keep any dog in all day.
Then you need to explain to us how you plan on handling inclement weather because if they're not going outside, they're not gonna fit in that room. I mean, that, that room's smaller than the play area down at the bottom of that ramp. You can't have ten dogs in there.
No.
That's, it, that's just inconceivable.
They would have to go a few at a time.
All right, so that, that issue has to get addressed. I'm concerned that there's no heat in that area and I don't know how you plan on handling that. You know, because it's cold and, yeah, they're dogs, but some dogs have a lot of fur and can handle the cold, other dogs don't have any fur and still can't handle the hot weather. So that's an issue to me.
And it says not to exceed eighty degrees.
Yeah.
Inside, that means you almost have to have on really hot days some way to...
You have to address the air conditioning of, of the facility.
So, and...
Those, those are the things I'm looking at, I'm not sure what the other board members are looking at. So let her, let her know because we don't want, I don't want you to have to come back at some other point and we're gonna give you different answers.
Yeah.
These are the things that we, that I need to, to see addressed.
I'd suggest you become more familiar with that set of guidelines on the board is, really soak it in and then we've got to figure out really what part of that is actually incorporated within the ordinance and what's not.
Well, see, it, it specifically refers to the indoor portions. It's not everything, it doesn't, it's not the protocol for feeding, it's not the protocol for cleaning, it's the protocol for spaces indoors, that's what that, that's the portion that we're dealing with, which is in various locations. And I highlighted the ones that I could find in there, that's why they were...
You mean yellow, that was your work?
That was my work.
Okay, yeah, well, there you is, she's giving you a hint as what's important.
So you should have that.
In, in that guideline, which I didn't follow through reading it, do they give guidelines on for size of dogs and how much space is needed?
They do not, but ASCP, uh, ASPCA does.
Well, only reason I'm asking is...
They say seventy-five square feet per dog.
Seventy-five what?
Square feet per dog. Ten by ten.
But they have to be able to get up, walk around, run, play school down, if they go to the bathroom, they have to be able to get away from it and it's horrible in a cage like that.
Well, that, that is why I'm trying to ask for spacing guidelines, I mean, you know, I mean, yeah, but now, I mean, this is new to us for right now, but I mean, this is where she can also find out.
Anything else you need to know about those?
I don't think so.
Susan, anything else that you need to know about those that we've covered?
No, I, I think they're covered. I want to...
Yeah, um, I, I, I think your, your, your own pot wouldn't there, you could say it and I will throw this out here, I'll bring my dog to a kennel sometimes and I'll, I'll be honest with you, I would feel sad for my dog all day long to be leaving him there just with nine other dogs all barking in a cage. I think, I think as far as business wise, you, you, you could make it a little more appealing and friendly and comfortable for the dog and make it feel safe. I think just having all those cages in a row, it wouldn't feel safe for a lot of dogs. I'm all right with the fence. That indoor play area, I mean, there's a lot of work you have to do. That this says it should be sixty degrees above, so you left it, say you're gonna heat it, but it's a small little space. Maybe fewer dogs might give you a little more flexibility around, around that kennel. It's up to you how, how you can design that.
I'd make one other suggestion too, as, as you're talking about it. I think, I don't think it's gonna be easy for you to bring water from the house out to the, to the dog daycare in the winter time. Just thinking about my experience and having to go into the house to get water to bring out to...
You know, I have, there's a spigot right on the outside of the house, I run the hose right out there.
But that's not easy in the winter time, using any hose in the winter time when it's eighty degrees.
Oh, I know, I use it for the horses every day.
It's awful. That's, that's just gonna be hard on you and it's gonna reflect on how well you can do the task on the inside of that building, you know? But it run, it seems to me running a, a water line on the ground to get there is gonna be, make things a lot easier for you and allow you to do a better job for the animals.
I mean, it would help to have a sink or something like that in, in the space so that, you know, you could rinse out bowls and...
Sinks running water.
And running water and stuff like that.
Yeah, but you have to play climate, climate conditions for water. You're around.
I have a question.
Marty, do you have, yeah, hang on, I'll just, I want to ask you. Marty, did you have anything for the applicant, any suggestions, comments, questions?
Uh, just, like I said, that play area, it was cold for us in there and I know it needs work, but guidelines of what you're planning to do so that we can see it. I mean, uh, you know, you're, you're, you're coming there, but I think this guideline also can give you a lot of insight instead of us trying to nitpick or anything else. If you know what you see here, okay, it will give you a better idea.
Okay. Now, you had a question?
I was just, I mean, I've been following her for like the past four years trying to get this started, but I was just curious, how do you start a business? How much money do you sink into the business and then have you people say, sorry, it's not, I don't know how to explain it, it's not up to code or it's not what we want or it's not legal after you spent fifty thousand dollars trying to get something going and then...
Well, that's part of the reason we're offering this suggestion, we are, because either send things to members of the board, many of whom are not experienced in looking at this, but thinking it through and, and looking at the resource that our planner has supplied to us and with apparently one board member who knows a little bit about care of animals, that's what we're trying to do here. It's not, it's not a matter of trying to shoot her down or...
I don't know, I'm not saying that, but I'm like running water, electricity, she's doing all that, you know, not the water, but electricity and first she didn't need an indoor place, now she needs an indoor place, but it's expected to be done like right now where we were in there.
We're not expecting it to be done right now, we're, we're simply saying these are things that need to be done to, to proceed forward to getting approval. But if she does all of these things...
You don't build it first, you get your permit first, then you build it.
Right, 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 but this is four years going and this is the first time we've seen this paperwork.
Application for a couple of weeks, I mean, a couple of months.
Yeah, we haven't had the application that long.
No.
Where'd you put the application in?
If you're talking about four years ago, no, this wasn't allowed in this district period.
It required a meeting at the town, a town meeting to change the zone to allow it to be there.
It was originally only pet daycare centers were originally in the distance zones.
Do you have any questions, Forrest?
Um, no, just if you can give me a list of, of your expectations.
Okay, I will get that for you.
Did you give the guidelines too? Did you give a copy?
She did.
Now, another question for you, have you, I haven't, have you gone to other doggy daycares?
I haven't, I haven't recently, but I worked for a woman who had one a few years ago.
Okay.
Good question, Marty.
Have you see how, there's how, as I'm just saying, do you... Have you see how, there's how, as I'm just saying, do like a show on top. That's, I don't know what town or whatever else, but, I mean, uh, so that you can see what it's, you know, like inside, outside, or whatever else, but, I mean, that's the only reason why I'm asking you.
Well, I basically modeled it after this woman's daycare. And she had it set up just like I had mine set up. She had it in her house, she had three different rooms with wire crates. None of them had dividers. Uh, she had as many as fifteen dogs in her backyard at any given time. She never had any fights with the crates, but she had some fights out in the yard, but, uh, that's why I modeled it after that, because it worked. She was out with the dogs all the time. They were almost never in the crates. And everyone absolutely loved her, loved going there. So, that, that's why I did it the way I did it, so.
Okay, I mean, that's-
I know it can work, but, you know.
That's the only reason why I threw that out, because, you know, you can go to a garage, and not every garage is set up the same way.
Right.
Okay, I mean, uh, and that was the only reason I thought, well, I set it that way.
We'll wait to hear from you.
So I'll just pick up the list from dad?
Yeah, get the list from dad.
Put it together to him.
And you can, you can, you can check with him to, to make sure that, that everything that you get that's on the list so that, so that that will be complete, and then you can come back to us and, and we can take a look at it and then move forward to, to, to doing a public hearing and, and creating the permit. Okay? Thank you. Item number four. PKW, District Water Tank Storage, Major Conditional Use Permit. After post-construction of a seventy-foot-high, one-million-gallon water tank on a thirteen-point-three-four-acre parcel, Tax map fifteen lot eight K in the BI District, and accessed by a fifteen-foot-wide access road at twenty-one oh four Portland Road. Tax map fifteen lot fourteen in the BI District. Kennybunk, Kennybunk Court in Wellsmore District is the owner of Tax map fifteen lot eight. And the applicant in Jamie Pachau, District Engineer, is the applicant's agent. The owner of Tax map fifteen lot fourteen is Elizabeth Buzel. That must be all of this fun stuff.
This is really interesting, actually.
It is. I just, I just wanna know, I wanna stand underneath it when the million gallon tank gets a leak. What a rush that would be.
Don't he get some engineer watching?
I'm gonna have a water slide going down that hill like you would move.
So, put it in perspective, uh, with one that, where it's a local here around here, like, uh, like Crow Hill.
Well, that's much taller and, uh, kind of obnoxious to look at. It stands out from miles away. This will be well-hidden by the trees. It's shorter than many of the trees.
But I mean, a million gallons, what's Crow Hill?
Uh, Crow, it's less, Crow Hill is less than that, but it's an elevated sort of shape. So most, it's mostly leg. If you look at it, it's, it's a hundred feet of leg and then probably forty feet of bowl.
That was the impression I got the first time you went down. This is, this is almost all bowl and it's barely off the ground.
Right.
It's actually depressed. Yeah.
Correct.
A little bit.
But that's a different design.
Will be carried a little bit.
Old, old school, everybody put it up higher for gravity feed.
Yeah.
Okay. They already have the gravity, so they, but they're just making a bigger soup bowl for, to hold more water.
So what are you gonna do, run a, run like, uh, some kind of an underground culvert to get water out of the tank?
No, there's a, there's a pipe to, there'll be two pipes, a fill and a drain, and they will, they're already run up as far as the temporary booster station that we have just beyond the Arundel cottages.
Yeah.
On our property. Pipes will be continued from there to the new tank site.
Okay.
We have easement rights through that thirty-foot easement to run pipes up the hill from Route One if needed, and may take advantage of that. It's most will happen in fifty or a hundred years. We may go that road as well. For now, we'll be hedging through the cottages. That's why those lines through the cottages were upsized. They're much bigger than they actually needed to serve the homes up there, for that reason.
Now, question, turn it, if, would, if being up that high and everything else, would the gravity feed, uh, increase the water pressure without necessarily having the pumping station? Down at the other end of it, because if you're so high in the amount of volume, if the pumping station is up, let's say, okay, would the pressure be equal? Or the same or what? I mean, uh, you know, you see what I'm saying is, because for so many years, we had zero water pressure on Route One.
It's, most of that-
Now it's, we have pressure, so I mean, I'm just-
It's pumped. The, it's, the tanks are pumped currently to maintain system pressure. It's a very dynamic, complicated system, multiple tanks, multiple pump stations. They boost as needed to, to keep pressure within a range. Uh, it's not all gravity controlled. This one will be matched to Bitford Socker's, um, grade line so that they could take by gravity. But to get higher up into the, the rest of the, uh, Arundel cottages, the highest elevations of that would see low pressure if we relied on gravity.
Yeah.
So that would boost it.
Okay. I mean, I would just, I wasn't thinking for, because elevation of Arundel cottage is higher. But I'm talking about download Route One, everything is lower.
Yes, it's all pumped, and it will-
So, I was gonna ask a stupid question, but I think that Marty's question sort of answered my stupid question, and that is, the water is used to feed businesses and the cottages?
Anything along Route One.
Anything along Route One?
That whole area.
Part of the water district.
This northern, northern part of the, of our distribution system.
Okay.
And also, also to Bitford vice versa.
So you guys are gonna share?
We have, we have both with Bitford Socker and York. We're interconnected from two districts on each, on each direction. We can back each other up at times if we need.
To hop right down this bit of the town into a long one?
We meet them in Bitford Pool and also on the one.
You're on Route One. Just curious.
And must be just north of that.
At the pumping station there?
There's a big, big strange-looking pump station on, on the left-hand side of the going one.
Down next to Motor.
Just going to motor land.
Motor land.
I don't think I've ever noticed this.
It's a little, it's a brick building.
Oh, okay.
That little brick building. That's the pumping station there.
Yeah, there's, there's a car, a used car dealer right next to it across from Champagne's.
Right. That's where Revs used to be.
Yeah, okay. I never realized that was a pumping station.
It says it right there.
Like I'm supposed to read stuff as I drive along.
Wow.
I barely pay attention to the speed limit sign all the time.
We know that.
All right, so basically, the things you asked for, we got detailed engineering plans for the Route One access driveway connection drainage for a distance of two hundred feet from the Route One rightaway. That was done by Blaze and, and Light Engineering.
They designed the first three hundred feet, the most complicated in the season.
We asked for two hundred, and you gave us three hundred.
Yes. So that first three hundred will, the first sixty to seventy feet will have full-depth pavement, like a road. The next two hundred and forty feet or so will be reclaimed surface, beyond that will be gravel. So yes, we hired Blaze to design that first three hundred feet as well as give the DOD permit.
Yeah, which you got.
Yes. And I designed the rest, the remaining fifteen hundred or so feet I did.
So, MDOT gave you a temporary construction entrance on Route One, north of, north of the cottages. So are you gonna be taking your vehicle, your trucks up that, that hill?
Yes, that's the whole point of it. If, yep, they can make it, they have very low first gears, and they can climb that hill between.
Can they? Okay.
That's for certain. That is to avoid putting all that large truck, truck, traffic, dozens of company trucks a day, potentially for a few weeks, a few months.
I'm sure Joe thinks it's a-
Through Joe's development. He's got a very tight portfolio. We have access through, absolutely, we have, we have the rights, but we can't do that, those people. That's why we're invested in this, this driveway.
And that's, it'll probably be the same one when you, you build a second tank.
If the second ever happens, yes, we would. That's why you guys insisted that we maintain it, at least annually go through and, and grade, we may even crawl down trees, that sort of thing, to keep it up, so that twenty to fifty years from now, if we elect to build a second tank, we use the same driveway.
Yeah, I, I just have a couple of questions. You have solar version control plant, the access work and the tanks up to the, uh, Jamie, forgot to change the culverts when you designed from twelve to fifteen.
The entrance or along the drive? They need to be fifteen?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's even a private for a temporary driveway.
Okay.
Okay.
You do that?
All right, good. The other, I only have one other question. We've got that depression, the track that's around the, uh, around the tank, and that's an access track. It's depressed. It's, it's lower than, you show it in the section, it's gonna be lower than the rest of the surrounding ground, right?
The, the test is, the, the tank is right at the crest, and it flat, we have to develop a flat enough, large enough area to be the lay-down area for casting pads. Beyond that, it will pitch down to the edge of the clearing.
Well, I was, I was looking at your section, that's, that's why I made that comment. Maybe, maybe this is inaccurate, maybe I'm, I'm misreading it. But the section showed that the, that there was, that you're actually depressing that area there, and, and the tank's gonna sit below the graded surface.
Oh, well, it depends on the tank design. None of that's been established. The tank may-
Well, you gave us, though, that's why I'm asking. Talking about this one here?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a section over here. See how it shows?
Yes, sure.
Are you ready?
Well, that's, this will be backfilled. That, that's, um, this, and this is so preliminary. That's a typical detail they give.
So that's not the final gradient? Is that what you're saying?
It's all to be determined. It's roughly, is it two eighteen elevation of the floor? But they, they like to backfill around the walls as much as they can. That gives freeze protection on the pipes, so you don't have to dip so deep to put the cuttings in. It also supports the walls.
So if you're telling me that you backfill from here to the tank, is that what you're saying?
Sometimes they go ten feet up the wall. Absolutely.
Well, then, that's what I wanna know. Because right now, the way you've got, it's depressed track all the way around, and the question was, are you draining it?
That would be, that would be a temporary situation. No, no, no. It all, any, any water would run off.
Well, that, that was the confusing part, because you show, let's see, this is an old one, but in the new one, you show, basically, this is gonna be the high point, and all the water's just basically sheet running all the way around.
Absolutely.
And just in the section, you showed it depressed.
That's from DM Tanks, that's a standard detail preliminary step. That, when, if they get hired or if their competitor gets hired, they'll produce a fifty to a hundred-page design set. That's their very preliminary.
Just wanna know how you're doing with your training.
I figured if you want to fix it, the pressure to get some data.
You're here all week, aren't you?
All week.
Board have any other questions? For tank, what's the color of the tank again?
Standard is gray, only because it matches the color of concrete, so you don't have blotching. So if you paint a gray tank gray, it looks pretty good. If you try to paint it any other color, you're getting additional coats, lots of pigment to, to not have a mottled look. So they can do it pink or white or anything you want, but gray is the standard.
Has Joe mentioned anything? The only person that's gonna be, the only people who would be impacted would be Abernathy, that whole section of thirty-three. Because this thing's in a death log, it will not, it will not be seen from the corner, from across the street. You can't see it. So, they, they make any mention of that? Because there were like seventy feet of vegetation between, and it's just, and a, a lot of water story. So I was just wondering if he had mentioned anything he does about that.
He hasn't expressed concern about the appearance, but we're happy to work with him if he has some thoughts on it. Sometimes they, they look strange if you try to disguise them.
Oh, I agree.
Generally, it's just a, a matte color, just a simple block of one color is your best bet. Let's try to do a gray, and it's cheapest.
All right. Does the board have any questions to be out here? So we deem the application complete?
Yes, we deem the application complete.
Wait, is, uh, public hearing? I, I need a motion to deem the application complete, so that we can get set up publicly.
I will make that, I'll make that motion that, uh, the applicant, that, uh, the application is complete.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded to deem the application complete. Any discussion?
Yes, uh, so the, uh, the, the, uh, application will be deemed to be including fifteen colors, is that correct?
Yes.
And the colors lock in at, at gray? It's not like the motion.
Absolutely.
From Marty's perspective, I don't think the town's got any concerns. Just mentioning that we had that big development around the store. He could, he probably might wanna talk to Joe about that, because it is thin through there. It will be thin after you clear out an acre of land behind, so.
And Joe's engineer, Rick Light, has talked to us about revegetation with intent to, to block the view after construction's finished. Totally on board with that. If that makes it easier for everybody, so the residents don't have that to look at.
That'll be cool.
Good.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good.
It is unanimous.
All right.
We need to do a public hearing.
Next meeting?
Next meeting on the twenty-eighth.
What, this, are you, can you hear everything? I'm locked in between possibly Joe and, or anything else to get an idea or a comment for, for a public hearing, so there's no-
Yeah, in case somebody shows up and asks. Have everything tied up with Joe in terms of, of the, the color of vegetation?
I mean, you know, at least, at least, turn it, have, you may not pick, like, pick a particular color or whatever else, not, but also too, at the same time, how you said about the revegetation and all this. I mean, this is, if anybody shows up out of Joe Public here, okay, at least you have it all.
All right, you'll be able to respond with them.
Yes.
Which is good, because tho- those are things that, that from a planning board's point of view, there's not a lot of impact on our side, but the guy living on Abernathy Drive might wanna help some of this stuff.
Even though they're not here at this time of the year. I mean, tha- that's why I'm saying, at least if you have Joe there, you won't have the residents, because they're not, because everything is closed down now.
Right.
So it's not being done while they're gone.
Okay, so I, I need, uh, a motion to hold a public hearing.
Some more?
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to hold a public hearing on the twenty-eighth of February. Any discussion?
Do we have any other pressing things for the twenty-eighth so far?
No, no.
Okay.
We're missing a couple people now. Jamie, right?
Yes.
And Mr. Jamie. So you will not be here, as long as the, the other four of us are here, that will not be a problem.
You're going away, good?
Marty.
All, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Can I?
It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Can I have to make the motion seconded?
Huh? Yeah, Tom made the motion, Yan seconded.
May I ask for a little direction on the next couple steps, only because?
Well, the next, the next step is a public hearing.
Yes.
And after the public hearing, uh, if things go well and there's not a lot of grief, we'll do a findings of fact, and they'll have your permit.
Should I apply for, um, building permits for a driveway immediately after that?
After that, yes. After that, you will be able to go and tell, uh, and apply for the building permit. Prior to that, you will not.
Thank you.
There won't be a building permit for a driveway. What is it called? Just go. All of them. You got a permit from the planning board, a lot more time than we should. This is a work, this is associated with the project, a curb. Curb, God, see, he's already got a curb.
He's got that.
He's got that from the DOT.
So we can just go build the driveway?
Know that, and that you're gonna start work. And you're gonna find, you're gonna start working, that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
New application, item number one, Arundel Farm Standard. A site plan three application proposal to construct a one-thousand-twenty-square-foot farm retail building serviced by a four-hundred-and-eighty-foot log commercial, four-hundred-and-eighty-foot-long commercial driveway. With two parking areas containing twenty parking spaces on a two point zero two acre parcel located on Portland Road, Tax Map thirty six, Lot thirteen, in the DB one district. Peter Faulkner trustee is the owner, and Ed and Sarah LeBlanc are the applicants. Sure don't look like Peter Faulkner. I don't know who he is, but I know that's not your name. Yeah, we, we need to learn to talk. It's a four hundred and eighty foot log commercial driveway.
And what we're joking about that, it's gonna be a, one of those old creeper.
Long road.
Quarter mile.
Yeah, that's right, they just roll.
Isn't that the way they did Route one through the margin?
Yeah, it kept.
Well, I was thinking more along the lines of back in, in first century, they used to take trips across, ships across a myths must down in Greece, down past Corinth, and they rolled them over a four mile piece of dirt, as opposed to riding two hundred miles around.
Roll them.
They just grabbed the logs and put them in front of them.
That's what happened, when you got a lot of free labor on the guys, right?
Old slaves.
Not so much now. You used to watch him do that, huh? You used to watch him do that, right?
That's right, yeah. He showed them.
Okay. Take it away, boss.
Okay.
Where's your easel?
Well, I could be.
Some folks had one earlier.
Yeah, no, I could be, I'm just.
So, nice to be back here. Thanks for seeing the application. Uh, this project, the, the site, I'll let you all a little familiar with it. VIP is up here.
Yep.
Southbound, Route one, Limerick Road, down this end, the intersection.
Remand Clinic, right?
Yep.
So you'll remember, you've probably seen this site on the market for, I think, eleven, twelve years.
It's been longer than that.
It's been out there for a long time.
Oh, it was placed back when Oliver owned it, or everything else.
So. It worked on it originally in nineteen ninety four.
Am I right? I looked at property there, and it was told it was unbuildable, by DOT.
There you go. So, so kind of give me a little bit of history of how we got here. Ed and Sarah have been searching for a property to do a farm stand in Arundel for quite some time. Can't really, obviously with a farm stand, you have to have high traffic, high visibility, and it can't be very expensive. Cause there's not a whole lot of money in selling vegetables and meat products and these things. Uh, they were able to find this parcel. This parcel that you can see is very wet. Has a lot of wetlands. It's an old, it actually used to be used for farming, you can see the old drainage corduroys up at the back.
In the pond?
In the pond?
Pond?
Yeah, there's a manmade pond, but that's offsite, that's.
That's a drainage pond, yeah, on the other side. So this property works for them for, you know, traffic counts going by, uh, visibility, all those things. The price, as you can imagine, is, is right. There's not a lot of, um, capacity to do much of anything on this site, other than a small little project. Uh, Jim and I had a meeting with the Department of Environmental Protection on, it will need a tier one NERC permit. There's been historical fills in here, uh, over the past, and we are including those in our tier one.
This short section of driveway, historically, just so you know, Donnie Bryant built that for Dr. Faulkner back in nineteen ninety five. It was, I believe, one of the original exempted fills. It was the year they created the one tenth of one acre exemption for, uh, wetland fills that are not wetlands of special significance. So Dr. Faulkner elected to use that to put a driveway access in, in the hopes that it was gonna sell back then. That is the historical fill that Jason's referring to. Once you utilize that number, you have to incorporate that into any further permit. So that number gets included in the rest of our fill application with the DEP.
So the important thing here was that we have kept, um, we have a grading plan, we actually have the NERC tier one application ready to submit. Uh, and based on how this goes tonight, we'll probably do that tomorrow. We kept under fifteen thousand square feet of wetland fill, historically, in for the proposed amount. Which is important, cause that keeps you at, out of mitigation. Uh, we had a great application coming from them, specifically they wanted to see the building, and the uplands, and everything else filled for parking. That doesn't work for this particular application, because they need to be up near the road. If you know the site at all, you know, if you built way back there, there's actually those tall, uh, wetland species, and you got all this scrub shrub in there, and that, you won't even know it's there until you're halfway by it.
Another important thing for the board to know is the distance we found from the edge of the travelway on Route one, and the edge of the right away, which is back here quite far from Route one, which is also the reason why we're trying to get this farm stand structure just as close as we can inside that set back line to the front property one.
So the state owns that, that property?
Yeah, just like on VIP, if you remember on VIP. Because I take it VIP had a forty-five or?
Yeah, they, they realigned the road.
If they ever did.
Took a lot more land.
They haven't done it yet.
Yeah. The building, uh, when we come in for a site plan application, you'll have some of the architecturals. Pretty much open air, there will be a bathroom and a wash sink, and those things will have a concrete foundation. Will not be open during the winter, only operates from probably the middle of April to the middle of November.
Yep, yep, right after pumpkin season. They're big in pumpkins, basically. This, this, this Ed and Sarah LeBlanc, by the way, is the Anderson farm that is well known up in Hollis. Been there for a lot of years. They farm a lot of different fields, all the way up and down the Saco River corridor. They have multiple farm stands in other towns. They've been wanting to be in the Cana Munk and Arundel area for a long time. I did, as part of the DEP application, include a photograph, and you'll get a copy of that application, but that is the photograph of the typical farm.
Water broom.
It is.
Yes, farmer's daughter.
It is, farmer's daughter, and that's the reason I thought to get familiar with the board, it would be important to include at least a typical example of what they expect.
Good job.
Thank you.
And that'll be, as I said, in the DEP app. We'll have that into the next submission, cause you folks have copies of. I thought it might be helpful for tonight.
And your ordinances require, um, only six parking spaces for the, uh, the square footage of the structure. We know historically, from having worked with them and seeing things in high traffic times, that you need overflow parking. We don't want anyone parking on Route one. So we have added, uh, extra parking out in the uplands, where we can get it also with a septic system when you locate it, where there's passing.
I, I had noticed that, and it says, cause it shows the proposed septic field all the way back at the end of the parking lot, all the way down. But you also have this proposed lowboy septic tank.
So the tank would be right outside the building. And then you're, there's a pump with a tank that goes up to the field.
That's, that's quite a stretch up.
Oh, it's a couple hundred feet. It's not that far of a pump. It's pretty standard. These days, it's not that. There was a time and a day where we, we were all weary of pump stations, but they were commonly installed with lots and lots of gaps, and places for groundwater to be infiltrating into the pump station. The common new pump stations that are coming from George Roberts, or from Overbike Chest, they've got rubber boots cast right into them, and they're, they're one-piece tanks now. We don't have the same concern with pump distances or pump stations the way we used to. I would say, for new construction nowadays, and doing thirty-plus years of septic design work, formerly with Frick Associates, probably more than half of the new houses these days have pump stations on it. Cause quite frankly, we used a lot of the good land up years ago.
How many spaces are we looking at? It looks like fifteen?
Twenty altogether, isn't it? Twenty was the total.
And, you know, employees would park back there.
How far? It's less than three hundred feet back.
It's a hike.
Yep, it is, it is a hike, and.
Is there a?
I would put it, I would put it down here, but, uh, the DEP would not like that.
I have a sidewalk, I think, it, it looks worse on paper. You gotta remember, this is a pretty big scale. What do you got, a forty scale here? Fifty? Twenty scale, you look at it.
Dunking a large scale map.
I mean, it's two, it's two hundred.
Which seems like a big one on this map, but not that big.
And we can probably squeeze.
It's less than football.
Yeah, and I can probably squeeze, uh, one of the things that I was more concerned about is, people are probably gonna park in, if you do the sidewalk, you'll see, people are probably gonna park in, it stays pretty, it's not all that spongy. I mean, you're gonna see that people are just gonna kinda probably pull off anywhere, cause it, we, there's not ditch, everything's raised up.
Usually ditches, so they tip some.
And there's a rock, it's called a rock sandwich, that we put to connect wetland connectivity. It's typical standard detail. So every, it's gonna feel, it's gonna feel like an old farm field.
With a, with a farm road, it'll feel a lot like a farm road. But they not asked for it painted, the ground road, they don't want it painted.
I need your help with this, cause it, cause I'm trying to figure out where the twenty spaces are. It looks like you have one, you, you have six there and go.
Fourteen.
Fourteen at the other end. It looks like some of them are very narrow.
Nope, all the same.
It is, okay.
What kind of engineer would you be if you didn't make the side, and the stall sizes correct?
Well, that's what I was asking.
We bet through that, we bet with.
Oh, different, different company.
Right, different company.
I mean, I'm just saying.
We have the motorcycle party.
Yes, remember?
Okay.
That's why I said.
I only know about the frogs and salmon.
This definitely needs a sidewalk.
Oh, yeah. Are you, are you asking for any waivers?
Couple of things, I just briefly, the, you know, this looks like a terrible wet site, and it's got a lot of wetlands on it for sure, but not all wetlands are the same. And what this is, is a wet farm field that, yes, it meets the three perimeter approach of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Wetland Dilution Manual, but this has been ag land and hay land for a long time. It's not your typical bog type wetland or something. This has.
It's like across a stream.
redeeming value. It's, it's, it's composed of all mineral soils, they're not organic soils. And I'll tell you, when you get up onto the crown of where they were using it for agriculture, it's actually pretty fairly well drained. I'm not gonna say it's great, but we can find suitability here. This was better than the minimum standard of the main state farm, I'm glad to say. So, uh, while it did require a pump station, it does require some fill material. There are no water courses or water bodies here. There's no vermin habitat here, which is important. I will mention to the board, we did do a review as part of our DEP, uh, application to determine whether any rare, threatened, or endangered species in the neighborhood. There was a hit. Somebody found what I believe, I'm not sure of this, I'm gonna look into it a little further. It shouldn't affect this very far. Where, I believe down on Walker Lane, which you're familiar with.
Yeah.
Dead End Road, across the street.
Yeah, yeah.
Halfway down Walker Lane, I believe somebody, probably walking a dog there, eventually saw a turtle crossing the road. And I believe we had a turtle sighting down there. The radius of that recognition on the state's website comes to the very edge of where we're at here. So this project is at the very fringe of what I believe is the one quarter of a mile radius from that turtle site. Just so you know.
Turtle's.
No, no, there's a manmade pond, like Marty said, that's not on our property. Rules say we don't have to worry about that. And otherwise, we have no significant havoc, havoc that we worry about.
Because you see, that was all part of Tom's part.
I'm, I'm suspecting that it was one of the house lots that they put on Walker Lane, where I did some of that wetland mapping myself. When they built the houses on Walker Lane, there was a couple, two or three out there in the field. Is my guess, that whoever studied the wetlands out there, probably came across how it, and how to site it.
So, so given the fact that this is wetlands, and you're so close to, to Walker Lane.
You aren't that close.
Is this in the shoreline zone?
No, no.
Not as much, but, uh.
Not even inclusive by the most stringent DEP standard, where they never make a.
By our shoreline zone.
Say what?
By our.
Yeah, so the, the shore.
We have a different.
The fact that it's.
Check the, we need to check the perimeter.
The size.
Just to make sure that that's.
Okay.
I think that the DEP staff felt comfortably that this is a site that's ringed by roadway, paved roadway, and other development. You know, I recognized it as such.
I have a quick question.
Definitely a wetlands banking site, if the DEP would let us do that.
Agreed?
And the site across the street.
Particularly the site across the street, because even.
But there's adjacent land to this too.
And I've looked at that one in the past, and that one's even more limited than this one.
I know.
Yeah.
But I'd like to see, does DEP still do wetlands banking? Westbrook ruined it for the rest of us, didn't they?
You know what, I, I honestly, I thought that, my, my sense, my sense coming through all the permitting that I got involved in is when they could say, no, we want you to get your checkbook out and write a number. It was much easier. Everybody at the core, particularly at the core, was saying, no, write the check, that's what we wanna see. And they'll happily bank that, and go try to do something with it, but it's not helping. Unfortunately, it doesn't help as well as, you know, you might want geographically, like globally. I mean, I think it, at one time, there was talk that we were gonna at least try to bank for wetland protections mitigation, but keep it local, and try to at least affect, have a positive outcome in the geographic area within which we're working, and that, that is not what's happening.
That's too bad, cause we could use it, we could, we could do basically, we could bank it elsewhere in Arundel, where we have some important resources that we could expand.
That's.
And create a.
You're creating to the core, because we. Cause we wanna protect the really important one.
Right, and this is not, neither is the other one, and I'd like to see them used for business purposes, cause it would keep parcels.
Correct.
So how much fill would you, would you be requiring?
The, the wetland impacts toll is fourteen thousand seven forty-five, I just.
Just, just under the limits.
Fourteen seven fifty-four.
They'd want, they actually wanted more parking, you know, you can't do it in standard tier one.
Well, people, I tell you, if it's like farmer's daughter, people still park where they wanna.
Yeah.
Now, here's a question to ask you. Where this is gonna be located, is the other, besides where the parking spots are, is that gonna be kinda moated?
Yeah, they'll probably.
That way, why I'm saying that is because that will also, at the same time, give it better visibility, but also too at the same time, it'll turn and dry it up even more for parking. Cause it won't be so soggy. I'm saying it because people don't always park where they're supposed to park.
Professional all, all. I reserve judgment on that comment. However, however, he, he's right. People, people are gonna park where they wanna park.
Yep.
There's gonna be plenty of parking out there. We have confirmed that the clearing of, or, or the maintaining of that farm field as a farm field, by cutting the vegetation, is not a prohibition whatsoever. It's, the impact into the wetland that would be a soil disturbance, that is what is prohibited without the permit beyond what we're permitting. The mulling of the vegetation, not an issue.
Just put up some no parking signs, and make sure that people pay attention.
Well, you know, I am even recommending, you know, maybe a boulder lining on, you know, where you double.
Well, you don't need it for the winter, they, they ain't gonna be plowed through there, so.
They could park out there all they want.
Well, you know what I mean.
Are, are you gonna be asking for any waivers, Jim?
None, none at the moment.
Then.
What they reserve on for what we're doing.
I think at this point, we need to schedule a sidewalk.
It's not light enough yet to do first day sidewalks, is it?
No.
Not yet. It's close, but not quite enough.
Close. If we did it early. Yeah.
Yeah, if we did a five o'clock sidewalk, that would work, but not much after six, we'd start losing it quickly.
It's not a big sidewalk.
I don't anticipate this to be a very long, uh, you'd need.
It'll be in terms of.
Time frame.
I think everyone, you can actually pull it in.
I think you'd.
We could probably get it, I'll, I'll get a chisel out.
What are you trying to get?
What do you guys think? What would you like to go walking out there?
It's gonna rain tomorrow, so.
I can't go Saturday.
I can't either.
I'm thinking the twenty eighth at five.
I can't advertise the time for Saturday.
If we, if we do it, just before the next meeting, either next Thursday or the twenty eighth.
Oh, yeah, we have snow on next Thursday.
Yeah, I would say, I, I've talked to some people about the weather, and the weather pattern's solid right here next Wednesday. Gets a little sketchy after that again.
How about the Saturday, after our meeting?
Well, we're gonna get three inches of snow on Saturday.
A week from, a week from Saturday?
A week from this Saturday.
A week from the Saturday.
I was gonna suggest Monday, Monday afternoon.
Let's, let's shoot, no, let's, let's shoot for the twenty eighth. It, it should be far enough out, and if the weather goes bad, we're just gonna have to.
That's a Wednesday.
It's a Thursday, two weeks from tonight.
So at what, at four thirty?
No.
I'm thinking about five or five thirty.
Will we have light then?
Yes, we'll still have light then, but it'll be, you know, it, this should not take us a great deal of time to walk and take a look at.
There are also no, no big tree camp either, so the, the shading, I guess, or the, the advance of darkness will be probably less on the site than a lot of. There are also no, no big tree camp either, so the, the shading, I guess, or the, the advance of darkness will be probably less on the site than a lot of it.
Yeah, it's pretty flat.
Last lights at five forty.
You wanna shoot so far?
Five, I think would be good, yeah.
I can't get out at five, man, five thirty.
It'll be dark unfortunately.
No.
Do you wanna pull the fire alarm for you?
So we're looking at the twenty-eighth?
At the twenty-eighth.
I think we have snow by the, too much of a snowpack.
And, you know, depend, depending on what it ends up looking like, I mean, if, if we're gonna have a snowpack, then we're gonna have a snowpack before then.
We'll see it coming.
Yeah, at le, at least we'll, we'll have enough of an advanced warning that if we need to, we can just, we can reschedule it to another point. The biggest problem is that we have to advertise the sidewalk.
You'll find, I think, even three inches of snow there is not gonna make a giant difference, because it's, it's mostly grassland, it's.
Yeah, I mean, you get any sun in there, it turns everything.
It's been mowed close, I can take you to my wetland flag.
I think, I think we should be able to do that without too much of a problem. I need to, somebody make a motion for me.
I'll make a motion, we, uh, schedule a sidewalk at five o'clock on the twenty-eighth.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any other discussion?
I won't be there at five.
Would you be willing to?
Not on the twenty-eighth, that's the same thing as we were talking about.
Oh, that's right, you're gonna be going, okay.
So I don't really even have a quorum.
If, if the three of us can make it, then we'll have the quorum that we need.
We'll delay it just as long as we can for you to get here.
I, I'm curious about that, do we need four with Roger out of town?
Yeah, he's a member.
We need four, we'll have to tell him, yes, to show up.
He can't get on the bus by five.
Or is that five thirty, we'd be better off doing it this week.
Did we have enough light?
It gets no sketchy still.
Can we do it this weekend? Is that a possibility? I could do it at seven thirty or eight o'clock in the morning, but I need to be.
Well, it's Saturday, we gotta do that. Saturday, I can't make Saturday or Sunday this, this weekend.
Monday, you could.
I could do Monday, I could do Saturday.
Well, you don't have enough time to emphasize it.
I can't make it this Saturday.
Well, I'm at an appointment, so I can go out there anytime.
How about Tuesday?
Tuesday looks good.
I can make it today.
Yeah, I can.
I can advertise it today, you know.
I, I can't do Tuesday, but that's okay, we need enough people to show up.
But we're still stuck five, it needs to be five thirty for Marty to make it.
If we waited four weeks from now, five thirty would be probably light enough.
What time is Sunday? I know these guys would like to have a Sunday.
Sunset's at five over eleven.
They wanna know if they can put this farm snow out there.
Yeah.
They also do have, um, uh, purchase and sale agreement that they're working on, there's a, uh, obviously they can read, you know.
What about next, I, I can do either Thursday or Friday, you can't see.
Both of which are after the snow.
Yeah, the twenty-first over twenty-second. I could do, I could do either of them, uh. Or I could do Monday, Tuesday and Thursday I've got, I've scheduled.
I, I could do, uh, a week from today.
A week from today?
Yeah.
I could do a week from today.
Okay, so we'll do it on the twenty-first.
It'd be, uh, what, what? Five thirty?
Five thirty? No, it's, it's on the twenty-first.
It's consistent.
You can have all of you there, you can do it at five, I mean, you don't, they won't necessarily need me there, I mean, if you have all, you have your quorum.
Well, yes, yes, you wouldn't know five thirty either.
Huh?
Can you do it at five? Five thirty's a better.
It is better.
So, five thirty's best.
Five thirty's fine, so what day?
Five thirty on the twenty-first?
You guys do your favor and compromise for five fifteen, please, cause first, last light is.
Oh, five fifteen.
Sunset's probably about five fifteen.
Okay, so make your sign.
Are there specific things that we need to be flagging out there, or the concept of the building, I mean, this is pretty.
Probably just a couple states for the building, it's not a big building.
And then, you know, maybe down.
Well, it's very obvious for the rest of the.
Break your snowbank. You're gonna be driving it.
That's the big guy's job.
Break, break the snowbank.
He's the guy with the shovel. You know, I shouldn't say that, I've been using the shovel for years.
Five fifteen, five fifteen.
Five fifteen on the twenty-first.
Yep.
Is that the same motion and second?
Yeah.
It's as amended. Okay, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Any unanimous?
Now, do they also, under their past experiences, do they stay open till like Thanksgiving? And turn out that they have other stuff?
Well, they sell, they bring in cider and stuff like that, they have apples and stuff like that.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be nice.
Yeah, cider.
I don't know, that's my ask.
The rest that they, they sell on free, their, their.
Yeah, but they, this will be closed down to.
Just like the fungus stuff.
Exactly, it's just like. They, they have to have some months off, otherwise they can't.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I didn't know if they had.
No, no, we should bring.
Something like bacon or smoke, smoke stuff.
It's gonna be open by then.
They will probably grow, uh, products beyond that, they have some beef themselves, but I think they, they market other people's beef, because they're gonna grow a small amount themselves.
No, I would just, you know, like jerky or anything.
Yeah, they have various other products that they like it.
Moving right along, thank you very much, gentlemen, we will see you in a week.
You're gonna see them in a few minutes.
No, we're not leaving.
It's the same crew.
Yeah.
Oak Ridge Terrace, which is why everybody else is here. Sorry, guys, you had to wait all, all night long. It's a major subdivision pre-application, a proposal to develop a fourteen lot subdivision on sixty-six point nine acre parcel located, identified as tax map seventeen lot fifteen A at the intersection of North Skilling's Road and Limerick Road in the R two and Shoreland Zone. Walter Woods is the property owner, Jason Baffietis is the applicant of record, I'm sorry.
Bobby Adams.
Bobby Adams.
It could've been a lot worse, yeah.
Uh, is the applicant of record.
Is that, is that South Skilling's Road?
It is South Skilling's Road.
Yeah, it is South.
I have been dealing with North Skilling's Road all day, and I accidentally put it in. It's your fault.
No, it's not, quickly, people need you for that.
Who knows what I'm talking about?
You gotta crawl underneath the bus, peek on the wheel.
I can't hear you, I ain't down there.
Whoa, gonna wait for Tom to come back, we'll see who's going. So you got, you've nailed the property, it's actually probably about, what is it, about a third of a mile down the, down the road this way.
Yeah.
On the right, you'll notice, I think, there's a sign, it's been out there for quite a while. This is, we're proposing a, um, to correct my terminology, it's not plus, it's conservation something?
No, plus.
No, plus, plus, plus subdivision in, in, they live on the old, maybe they can bring the lots down to forty thousand square feet. Uh, commensurate with preserving, uh, open space, um, that makes up the difference. Uh, Jim has, has actively mapped all the wetlands, um, he's done a high intensive soil survey, per, per yordances. Really, it's, it's a nice land out there, it's a little sketchy up at the front, which is why we're putting all the open space in, which actually would be a nice amenity, because.
It'd be a nice park.
You, you're not really gonna see this a whole lot from Limerick Road, um, do have legal access off of, now you got me thinking I'm gonna say the wrong one, South Skilling's Road. We, we, we will require a tier one NERPA N W P wetland permit, uh, taking this, last thing we talked about, less than fifty thousand square feet of impacts. We do try to cross at the most logical spots, um, due to, uh, your roadway geometry requirements or the horizontal geometry. You know, I, I can't really run a road, get a turn in and run a road down the finished portion of the wetland, so there'll be a little bit of open space, extra space, uh, there the, south of the. Yes, southeast of the road coming in. I will note that this project will probably be done in phases, what we're proposing is phase one, and I'm sure you're all well aware of the D E P requirements. Because the lot is greater than thirty acres, um, if we do more than fourteen lots, this would be a site location project, which is a much different ballgame for the applicant. And a much longer permit process, but you see, we're gonna propose to just do the fourteen lots now, and then if the market's great, things go well, we will probably come back. Uh, the applicant is actually here, Mr. Woods, back, maybe next winter, after we get things going, to propose an amendment to the subdivision.
Then we have to do a site location.
And then site location. Yep, yep. So, but it will require a stormwater permit with the DEP, cause it'll be more than an acre of previous area, uh, within the, uh, right of way. Mr. Woods will be selling the lots, um, to another, to individuals who then, um, so he will not be building the houses on spec and then selling them, which is another component of the, the DEP, um, requirements that they track. Uh, about twenty-three hundred linear feet of road for the cul-de-sac ends. Really, you know, it's, it'll be, it's just sort of your, your nice rural wooded subdivision, uh, lots of topographies and roads walking down, maybe lots of small stormwater ponds. You need to serve requirements for stormwater treatment capacity, um, not a whole lot, if you care to get your thoughts.
Is the road gonna be paved?
Yes, it'd be a town, to, road built to town standards, so.
Okay.
Just one, one point that was interested, um, well, it's way beyond town standards. Well, you've got twenty foot lanes in there. I, yeah, you need to look at your cross section.
Oh, is that, is it, is it, they put twenty instead of ten?
They put twenty, the whole thing's supposed to be twenty, but they do twenty and twenty instead of twenty.
Forty foot lanes, wow.
Now, wait a minute, we're gonna try, we're getting by DEP with that one, I'm sure.
We're having wrangeries on that.
That's avoidance and maximization.
Exactly. So, so those, I, I thought, be, because I read somewhere, I can't remember whether it was a note on there, it said those were, those were, uh, N W I wetlands, I went, no, they don't do wetlands like that in National Wetlands inventory.
No, no, but.
Too specific.
No, these are accurately mapped, however, the N W I map did map, uh, some of the wetlands, uh, as emergent slash shrub scrub, with a cowarded classification. This property is the old Davis Pond.
Right, yeah.
Rodney, I, I knew Rodney, I helped get the house sold originally back in the day, and this was the remaining land after the lot, this, this is the original farm lot right here. To the side of this, and this wetland system that's coming down through the, the, the knolls and the good land, eventually ends up draining into what's known as Davis Pond, which is right next to, uh, Limerick Road.
Which is no longer there.
Which is no really, right, they took it.
Beaver's the dam.
Took the dam off of it.
Right, uh, I, I, I want a note to the board, again, we've done a bit of research, believe we have a turtle sighting there too, okay?
What kinds of turtles?
Just one turtle.
I don't, I, I don't, I, I don't know, they, they.
They don't tell us.
It's so funny, they, they put it on a map, and they want everybody to know about it, but they don't want everybody to know too much about it.
Cause they won't tell you exactly where it is.
For fear that somebody's gonna go find it and steal it. But then it gets caught a turtle. It's probably the same.
I can tell you, I've summoned up, I'm just myself, mic that up in the butter, I have a, I own effectively the bulk of Davis Pond, and I've seen, I've seen a number of salmon in there, so. And I know it's, I think the DEP determines the wetlands as special significance.
Yeah, the lots, that's the question, correct. And, and so that, uh, because we, we knew that there would be concern in the neighborhood, as well as from the board, we did go to DEP staff, I had Lucian Lang, Lang La, uh, from the Portland office out to look at the natural resources on this property. We did obtain, prior to coming to you, a field determination form from him, that kinda identified some of these, uh, 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 resources and, and associated affect by the DEP standards. Uh, I believe with the, the turtle sighting and notification, we've got a project here that is sensitive to that. None of the lots of the road should be anywhere near the front of the property along Limerick Road, and that was specific and purposeful. So, so, and the road is skewed way over away also from that affect. So we feel like that.
It cuts right through Davis Pond.
Say what?
It cuts right through Davis Pond. It literally cuts through the pond.
I don't believe so, no.
I can point out where that, where it goes.
I can show you, I can show you, if you dam that block like you would like to, or the state has requested Mr. Davis to dam it up, that pond will go all the way through Marley.
Yeah, so there's.
It wears dried up because of the, the dam.
There's a farm, there's a, there's an existing farm road that goes through a wetland swale.
Yeah, of course.
I've got it mapped as Bitterford A on that side, I, I guess you're suggesting that's part of the pond.
The pond is, there is, what you, your pond on a road is, is lucky to be a walk through right now, but yes.
No, 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 I'll walk through that.
So, so I can.
We actually have a tree there, I could drive.
I have photos.
You would not, I would think that's.
Hang on. Yeah, this is, this is. There, there will be time for everybody to ask comments and questions, this is not it right now. This is a, an informational hearing, this is what we're looking at doing.
We're giving you the information back, I guess.
Not when you're talking over everybody else.
So that the board is clear, I believe the gentleman is referring to that section of road that is proposed through.
Yep.
A map unit called Bitterford A, and it's a section right near the B. Which is certainly the, one of the wettest portions of the wetland that we need to cross, but I, again, this, this is gonna be subject to review by DEP staff.
Okay, so they have, they have not done, done any review?
Lucian has walked this with me, as a matter of fact, Lucian Lang La is familiar with this specific location, because I pointed out to him right from the beginning that this is the likely location for the road to go, so, but we'll go from there.
Cause that's, I think that, that's up in the area of where the beaver dam was, that got taken out, it was back in here someplace, cause it, it, I, I live on the other side on Duck Brook. Wiped out Duck Brook.
It may very well have been the beavers in the culverts themselves that were under the farm road, and that would.
It could, it could be, it's, I just know that at one point they were gone and so was on the water.
And I think Rodney's gone, and he wasn't pulling the, the sticks out of the culverts anymore.
So if, if I look at this though, there were three areas of wetland that you have to cross?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, there, there's the two fairly big ones, and then there's, it looks like this one might be all of.
Yeah, the, the middle one.
Neither one of the first two in the road se- section have, uh, water bodies in them.
Oh.
They will have culverts under them, but there are no natural resources such as water courses or water bodies at those two locations. This on the other hand does.
Okay.
That's a, that's a east tributary.
Yeah, that'd be a stream crossing, I think.
Okay. What is the plan for that, the stream crossing? What is the plan for the stream crossing, I mean, did you put in like a normal culvert, did you put in a bridge?
Nope, so we have the size, so, so, yeah, yeah, no, definitely not a bridge, but you have to size one point two times the natural, the normal bank width.
Okay. And that's, normal is considered what it's like right now, correct?
Right, it would be like a twenty-five years' long, would be your typical two year, typically, you'll know when you see a stream, you'll see the cut.
Yep.
And then above the cut, there's what's usually called the flood, the flood width, so we only size one point two times the natural cut on the stream. And then, there's, you know, storage behind it, the culvert size, the process through, there's calculations.
There's only seventeen acres of wetland back there?
Can I ask him?
Yeah, yeah.
Seventy-nine or seventy-nine, or sixty-nine.
Those are typical fingered wetlands, you know, that's, that's not typical of, of Kanabon, Kanabon Board or, or other.
Yeah, no, it's just when I, when I look at it, it's, I'm looking at it going, darn, you know, it's a seventy acre lot, but there appears, it, it just looks as if there was a lot more water.
Okay, well, our wetland map, our Shoreland Zone map shows, shows them bigger than they are.
Okay.
On this map, in terms of widths, it actually shows it going in the opposite direction of what Jim's, you know, basically flagged in the field, so that's interesting. Have you done topo or are you using LiDAR?
We have LiDAR. We're finding that it's plus or minus six inches even, with the new, you know, the, the new, uh, tree cover penetrating stuff that they've thrown, works pretty well. Ian, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I was just wondering, um, what the theory was in, in making that, uh, first, uh, hard turn to the left, further up, yeah, right there. As opposed to, uh, extending further.
as opposed to uh extending further horizontally, if you will, I don't remember like directional orientation here. Oops, see it?
No, instead of, instead of keeping a, like a course or something.
Yeah, and, and crossing where it's minim- more minimally wet, what was the thinking with that?
Well, the thinking there is, you know, you typically don't, and I, and maybe we could, I could probably do a reverse curve here and come that way. So you typically don't wanna build a whole lot, you know, thousands of fifteen hundred feet of road where you're only getting loading on one side. Does that drive your cost um per unit up, but it's certainly something I think we could look at, make some alterations, especially um probably things will come up on the sidewalk.
Swing around that knob on number thirteen.
Might offset the crossing, crossing the wetlands too.
What about if you had a road and you didn't have to cross any of that way around? With an existing Laurel Lane that's already there? Kind of.
It's a private, private way.
Right.
We can't, we can't give them that permission, it's a private way.
Who can?
The people who live on the lane, the whole, everybody on the lane.
I'd rather they use my front lawn than have one on my front lawn and my back lawn.
Yeah.
The road is already there, it's not impacting any wetland, you're not building up a road across the pond.
But it's not just you, Jerry, it's everybody else who's on the pond.
The surrounding, that's what I mean, you could need it.
Yeah, that's not our, that's not our part here.
No, it's a suggestion, I guess, you're not building any wetland with a road there, you're not building a road across the pond.
But that, that's a discussion to have with Mister Woods in terms of how that works out.
We'll, we'll sit down with these folks and talk about it as well. Yeah, cause that, you know, that might.
I have no problem with subdivision, you guys have the right to build whatever you want, I'm not fighting a law.
You don't, you don't own the land all the way to the top of the code, do you?
Damn, man.
You're not all the way to the top though.
There's a little section, they have a J Franklin on this.
Well, we can, we can.
It's ten feet wide.
You guys can have that conversation.
To, to be pub- to be on the public record here, I've been suggesting from day one, when Rodney's still owning the property, that somebody ought to be talking to the people on Laurel Lane.
And we actually had, we actually.
I was working on a deal with Rodney until it got sold off and then.
And we actually had that discussion as well, we had that discussion at a meeting, you know, you know, Laurel Lane, the concern that we had was how many people we're gonna have to deal with, how many people are gonna say yes, how many people are gonna say, what is the town gonna require us? You have to bring that up to town standards, am I gonna have to pave the whole Laurel Lane if that enters to us? So those are the questions that I have that, I think we're the happy to sit down with these folks and talk further.
And what happened, what happens to the South Skilling Road, I mean, there's gonna be a lot more traffic on South Skilling Road as well.
There'll be traffic either on South Skilling, whether we come for Laurel Lane and do it or something.
Right, proportionate.
Right.
So that's, that's a discussion that you guys can have.
I'm open to that.
If you've got any questions about the impact on the private way and whether or not it be, has to be paved, check with the town planner to, to find out all of those requirements in terms of what's going on. Particularly if you want it accepted as a town road, if you want it as a town road, it's, it's gonna end up being paved.
My intent is to have this as a town road, build it as town standards, have the engineer review it, stamp it, and then hopefully bring it to vote for the town to vote, you know, members of a town road, that's, that's my intent.
Yeah, that would be the way to do it. And then, like I said, talk with Jerry and all of the other folks that are on Laurel Lane and, and find out what, what you need to do. But if that's gonna solve part of the solution, and it may, it may not, I don't know.
I've done a number of sketches from Laurel Lane myself, just seeing what's what, it was still gonna have wetland crossings. You know, coming in to that area even from Laurel Lane. We're still gonna have wetland crossings, cause we're gonna have to get back towards lot number two and lot number three. Uh, no matter what, so what's the problem, it's still gonna be there.
That's the goal to the right of my house, I own a lot eighteen acre in South Skilling Road. I'm the only lot that doesn't have any buffer trees or anything between the big field that's out there.
Yep.
And my concern is the road's gonna hug, your road's gonna hug my property line and, you know, the lights and the noise and stuff like that.
But why don't we, like I said, will, will this meeting just information on the pinboard? After this, I'll be more than happy to sit right on the hallway with this thing and really take down what your concerns are and see if we can incorporate those things into most concern.
He's good.
I know, probably.
Okay, okay.
Can I just?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Can I make one more point and ask one question to the board? In the, so the existing map, there's this kind of hotly contested uh tree crossing uh using an existing farm road. Um, I can tell the board that the existing farm road as stated in the D E P determination is probably ten feet wide, literally. And when it rains, that tributary actually cascades over the existing farm road like a waterfall with any significant rain whatsoever. So, and, so that's my first point, and second is, I'm, I own the farm, um, I actually depend on that stream for irrigation, so I'm heavily concerned about the impact that, that county road would have on downstream water quality. I know that's a given when any wetland determination, obviously. And then to, within the D E P determination that Jimmy Logan did with the G E P, if you look at that existing farm road, there's one side that is already determined as a wetland of special significance. The D E P determination on the other side says it is not a vernal pool, it is a wetland but not a vernal pool. I can tell you that I'm, I spoke to Jimmy when he was, as he was, I believe, walking out with the D E P there, sound a butter, let me share that right away. Um, we had probably just gotten six inches of snow be- before the D E P walked up there. And my understanding is you can't really determine what is a vernal pool and what, what is a wetland of special significance when there's eight inches of snow pack. And I find it hard to believe that on one side there's wetlands of special significance and on the other there's nothing? When there's such a water flow that it literally cascades as a waterfall over the road whenever it rains, like a flash flood essentially. And then, just, let me make sure I, yeah, and so as a business owner, a farmer, that water quality issue is incredibly important to me. I'm actually looking into using Davis Pond for household water, because I drilled the well on the property for six thousand dollars that I effectively cannot use whatsoever, because I'm, I'm pumping some water.
Do you have a leaf field on your property?
I do.
Well, the leaf field is, is gonna have the same impact as, as, as the water quality.
True, but not in like, but not in like gasoline from cars, plow trucks, salt, gravel.
I think Jason, you know, through the engineering process can obviously, you know, create um certain retention areas and level up spreaders, which is gonna retain the stormwater, and that's something we're gonna have to do through D E P.
Totally, totally, yeah.
I'd make sure that we can treat that accordingly.
Yeah.
You know, prior to getting into any certain wetlands, and the idea, the property that I see, I'm fairly familiar with it, obviously. And um the well in itself is also a great actor for, for the, for the purpose of, you know, treating the water prior to that well and going through the soils from that point. And that's something we're gonna have to do with D E P.
And I think, again, I think that's, that's part of the discussion that you guys have to have.
Right.
In terms of what's going to happen. I have a question, on the plan, it shows down at the very beginning, the fire retention mark. Is that the only fire retention?
That's true, though. That's stormwater.
Why did I think that said fire?
No, look, that would be a location for.
Proposed fire protection source.
So a sister or, or a pond, whatever, um, and that's gonna be a.
If, if you're going back twenty-two, twenty-three hundred feet.
Yeah, the fire chief.
That's not gonna do you any good, cause if, it's, it's gotta be within a thousand feet of wherever they're gonna, so you, you'll, you'll leave that one there, but you'll probably have to put another one in someplace.
Or it may make sense that one ends up in the middle, depending on what, the fire chief will work.
Check with the fire chief and he'll let you know, but jet, they only have a thousand feet of hose.
Right, they do?
Well, they might, they, one of the trucks has fifteen hundred, but most of them have a thousand feet of hose.
If I, if I, if I could make one brief.
They will not.
If I could make one brief comment in terms of the gentleman's point about being able to determine vernal pools in the winter or not. Uh, it was pretty simple in the case of the location we were heading to at the time that he heard that conversation in that it's a, that the area we were looking at is a blue line stream on a U S G S map. And I believe, I'm, I'm pretty sure with all my work at the D E P, even though salamanders and frogs will lay egg masses in slowly moving streams, a stream is still a stream but not a vernal pool. A vernal pool by definition is a naturally occurring closed depression in the land. So, for the board's purposes here, I wanna make it abundantly clear that just because frogs or salamanders will lay eggs in a body of water or a place where standing water exists, doesn't automatically include it into the definition of the Natural Resource Protection Act standards of the main D E P. So that, that's an important point, not just for this project, but all future projects, because a lot of people know vernal pools are showstoppers for a lot of projects. Uh, I'm here to say this, we, we looked at this pretty carefully to start with, we wouldn't be this far if we hadn't looked at this pretty carefully about, you know, those kinds of uh sensitive habitats, so just to make that.
Can I just, I have one more question for the board, I think lot one um on that property, it includes the right of way? So how, what is, explain to me how the right of way would work in that case? There'd be a right of way going through, directly through the lot, allowing me access to my back property?
If there's a right of way, huh?
Yeah.
You have a right of way, you're right.
And then, and then the net, in the net, the square footage associated with the right of way, is that included in the two acre minimum of that lot?
No, that gets taken out and the, it'll be a cluster subdivision, so that lot doesn't even have two acres, it just needs forty thousand square feet.
Okay.
Okay, does the board have any more questions? Do you guys have, what do you need from us?
A site, you want a site?
Yes, sir. I apologize. I, I'm new to this whole thing, so is there any way I can get a copy of the drawing, so I know what this is gonna look like? I'm also one of the abutters, and I got this memo in the mail on Tuesday night, so. Once, once they, they have submitted the plans with all of the paperwork, it will be available at town hall. I mean, I don't mind, I'll take one, I don't have a problem with that, I just wanna give and see what's going on.
Send me a PDF.
Get, get in touch with the town planner and he'll be, he'll be able to get a sketch plan, so that, with you, if I get it.
Okay.
I'll get you a copy soon.
Okay.
This is one I think we should.
This is a Saturday job, right?
No, I need to.
Look at it. Careful, this is a long, expensive. Correct, 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 I'll suggest the people to wear their appropriate footwear.
And winter muck blocks.
You might be able to do sun improvements.
Actually, if, if.
And, and I think this is, this is going to be the kind of a thing that's gonna have to be done on a Saturday or in the middle of an afternoon.
It may be that the suggestion to come in off of Laurel Lane is a good one for this sidewalk, because it might, although we wanna look at the crossings that are easily accessed, here's a close point in old uh South Skilling's Road where we can access this portion of the road. But back up in here, you're better off coming in off of Laurel Lane to be able to see this, here's Laurel Lane right close to the side property.
Are we, are we permitted to walk across Laurel Lane for that purpose?
That would be a question for the abutters.
I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna schedule a bus.
Might access the.
Park our cars to the property. Yeah, even with the whole cars.
Yeah, cause you're gonna, we're gonna end up with a bunch of cars parked out there, and that would, that might create a problem. I, I don't wanna.
There's adequate parking on South Skilling's along the side of the road, I think that's not that travel the road that is gonna be a problem. It's speed limits, I think that's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit.
I see cars parked out there all the time.
South Skilling's is a public road. There is a little bit of access up along.
The concern is blocking the property, but you have no access to get to the back?
No, we can get, we can get there and walk all the way up from South Skilling's from the access point that they have, we can reach all the way back up to the end of the property. You're saying it might be easier.
A short walk, yeah.
But it might be worth.
I give you all some.
But it might be worthwhile to get a consensus, if you can, from the people on Laurel Lane. So that when we're, they're walking, if it's not a possibility for you to use that as an access point, there's no point in looking at it.
Well, they, they just want access to walk the, you gotta walk the side, right?
I think we also wanna consider.
If you go for Laurel Lane, it's gonna be a much easier walk than trying to walk this road. It says you can drive a pickup, I'll tell you, sure, you better bring a machete to walk across that road.
Okay.
I've lived here twenty years, you don't walk it.
That's one of the things we might, we might wanna do the site rock from South Skilling's all the way up through, just so that we can see what that road's gonna look like. Unless you reach a consensus with Mister Woods before that.
I, I would totally volunteer my property to park at as well, I mean, the road is gonna be visible from my barn and those little locks.
Park, park right next to the food stand, the pump stand.
Right.
Through there. He's a pack at my house, too.
Yeah, so.
But if Laurel Lane is viable and people are openly discussing it, then it's worthwhile, all of us looking at all of the options while we're walking around.
Have that as a.
So we can.
But you might find that Laurel Lane, in order to utilize it for the purpose they would like it to be used, needs a bunch of upgrades as well. And that would be a chance for the board to see just the condition of Laurel Lane, which was not built to any kind of standard.
It was completely brought to town specs, with the exception of paving, when it's a bit by law.
But you may find that it's actually more cost effective for you to upgrade that than it is to build a brand new, you know.
I was a little concerned about culvert sizing, but that's, I'm not the.
So. You know, you can't go anywhere without a consensus on Laurel Lane, so I think it's, you know, if we're looking at it, walking around, it's worth looking at if it's possible.
That way too, if other people at Laurel Lane see a whole, see a whole bunch of people there.
Yeah.
Don't know what's going on.
It's a mile hike.
And then, they might get excited.
I mean, can we invite you there, if they're walking around, you laugh to the side.
Do you have a dog waking up, you can ride?
Not anymore, we have to have him put down.
So if we're walking around, if you find out that.
And just lower it down on.
He was a little dog.
He was just a small dog.
If you know we're gonna be here and you wanna walk it with us, I, I don't think I, I don't think I'm supposed to invite you. Yeah, so you're gonna be notified, you might as well go on the walk, you should, everyone knows it's on the walk with us. And have it be part of the conversation.
So we, we need to look at his date to do this sidewalk.
There's a lot of filtering as tatts, what, what do I do? I.
What's that?
I'm very concise.
She makes it up.
Yeah. She's clairvoyant.
I'm amazed, I'm amazed.
She also looks at, she also looks at the video.
Yes, it's a lot of.
I'm actually a legally introverted.
No, that's great. She's good just making it up.
Ooh, that's a bad day, sorry. I'm gone, I'm gone from fifth through the thirteenth tomorrow, if you'd care to have a wetland person present for the sidewalk.
And I'm out of town on the sixteenth.
Morning, down toward.
March, so.
I could do the night, we just have to move it to later in the day, you're not gonna be around, so that's not gonna help.
No, but you, I think you should be there.
What about on the Saturday, the second, is that available?
On the second of March.
Okay, okay, so then we're looking at the twenty-third of March.
Twenty-third?
Twenty-third. Because.
I will be here, February, yes, March, I will be here.
For the sidewalk?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be out of town on the sixteenth, I'm leaving on Friday the fifteenth.
Both February twenty-third.
Huh?
Did we look at that?
The March twenty-third, February twenty-third?
February.
Okay, that.
Saturday. I, I could reschedule later, as long as I'm done before noon time, I could do that.
Don't look great, I think, for Saturday morning.
So we could do, we could do Saturday morning around nine o'clock, but who, who's gonna be available?
I can, I can make it, the twenty-third?
The twenty-third, Marty?
I don't know.
Okay, Jens, are you gonna be around? Jens will be out, so there's three of us.
What about Jamie?
And we don't know about Jamie.
Is that right now, right now? Is it, Jerry?
Yes.
You should take everybody's temperature on Laurel Lane or whatever, and sort of, you can figure out how people feel even about entertaining the idea.
We've got, we've got to tie out a date before we go any further.
Living present, all in property on, on March seventh, Thursday.
You're gonna have to take time off, you know, it's a mile walk through, through the turn, four thirty minute. Is it, are you going?
No.
Only if we break the handle.
What about, what about March seventh?
There, I can see her.
In the afternoon.
I won't be here.
At some point.
I won't, Jason will have to cover me, I'm leaving from the fifth.
Oh, that's right, you said we were going.
And probably would be, you know, probably shouldn't be there versus.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it would be good.
And nothing in February? When do you leave, Jens?
What's the last, what's the last Saturday in February?
The last Saturday is the twenty-third.
It is the twenty-third.
Yeah, the last Saturday is the twenty-third.
What could we find out from Jamie if he can attend and then?
Well, can we find out from Jamie if he can attend and then?
Well, the, the problem is that we can't schedule a sidewalk now.
And if Jamie's not gonna make it, it makes no sense, and we, we won't have a court to give her.
Yeah, if you can't compute on four, it makes no sense for sure.
Why don't we do this, Mr. Jerry? Why don't we just leave it open ended and, uh, I'll do a, an email poll and include these gentlemen in that poll and see when everybody's stars cross at the same time.
Well, you could have, the twenty-third is your first choice and maybe have a second choice first, that would be in March.
We're looking at March twenty-first. Sundown won't be until, until after six at the end. Cause I was listening to the news, it's gonna take, it's an hour or twenty minutes.
And the twenty-first is a week, that's a weekday?
Thursday.
That's a Thursday. Or Saturday, the twenty-third, which would be. From my point of view, either that Thursday or Saturday.
The sun's the same, the air's the same.
Yeah, I don't know.
We had a plane with me that night, so.
Yep, we'll come here from like five o'clock and we'll be here by seven and we'll all be muddy, soaked.
Yeah, guess what, the janitor loves us.
She already loves us.
Do, do you want me to do the?
I'm delusional, don't look like that.
Do you want me to do the email poll or?
Or just twenty-first work?
Twenty-first work.
The twenty-first at five P M.
I'm not gonna be here.
What? What day?
You're not gonna be here. What about the.
Do you guys?
I'm leaving out for three weeks.
Did you get the memo? You can't do that.
I can, I can, but I'm having a big, I'm just having a big.
Grandma, I think the grandma's that should work.
Yes.
Yeah, Wednesday time.
So the February twenty-third, though, I just, I'm just speaking on behalf of the client, I think the sidewalk, you know, we try to do it sooner than later because we have design stuff that needs to be done.
What do you, what do you guys think about nine o'clock on the twenty-third? Jens isn't gonna be here.
Oh, this, February twenty-third, Jens?
We need Jamie.
We need, and I can make it. We do, we do nine o'clock on the twenty-third. We do, we do eight o'clock on the twenty-third.
What day is it then?
It's a Saturday.
Saturday.
It's a week from the Saturday. I'll try, I don't know, I, let me, uh.
Okay. Schedule it for, should we do eight or eight-thirty or nine?
Eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty? Schedule it for eight-thirty on Saturday, the twenty-third.
That's the only thing.
All right, twenty-third and nine o'clock?
Yeah, eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty.
Eight-twenty.
Okay, eight-thirty.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Okay.
And a discussion will be had after we're done with.
No, we have a motion, so.
I'll make a, a follow motion. We have the sidewalk at that time.
Okay, sidewalk, eight-thirty on Fri- Friday, uh, on Saturday, the twenty-third.
You have a second?
Is there a second?
I'll second it, thank you.
The motion has been made in seconds. Is there any other discussion? There is none. Those in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. Where are we meeting? Um, are we meeting on Skilling's Road?
We haven't gotten that part yet, we haven't.
We should meet on South Skilling's Road and start right at the bottom and walk up.
Yeah, we're, South Skilling's Road is straight and then as it starts to turn, just park anywhere.
The intersection is right here, in that first, anywhere along that first stretch of, straight stretch before it turns, we'll be fine.
So you may not be bringing the vehicle.
No, I'm gonna have to because I have to go someplace, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Are you bringing hot potties?
I'll have hot cocoa, how's that?
I'm bringing coffee. Cope is a lot of coffee.
Cope is great, uh, it's a good strawberry.
Can we use this, are we, are you, you folks done with the meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Could we use this, can we talk with these folks?
Well, actually, we have some other things.
Yeah, we have some other stuff, yeah.
I'm like, we're done?
Oh, yeah, are we, is this signing time?
Yeah, get ready to sign my license. Take your free time.
Thank you. We will carry on with our.
One of the reasons I was trying, I looked at the weather forecast and I better remember what it said to, to what it turned. I don't believe there's any other business for sale.
So they should get all the production around.
Well, there's other business.
Talk to many people and get as many possibilities.
Seems like this guy seems to have.
I have the one website, turn it, look it down.
Yeah, I think he owns a lot of connections going on Laurel Lane.
Ties and lows with the whole weather.
I think he does, I don't know.
There was just the sunny, rainy, snow.
How many acres does he own?
They're very.
Well, it, it behooves them to look at every possibility and see every which way from Sunday.
Because it, because of the way that it's. Oh, I'll make your copy. I'll make your copy, I'll put it in your.
On August, honey, my.
Yeah, I will make copies of it for the record for you.
It is, I filled it all in.
Okay, piece of original.
So when is your grant held?
Make so much more.
Oh, I, oh, I've got lots of paper, so if you want some.
You know how I can generate. Oh, I'm not interested, thank you.
Okay.
I'll be sure to do that.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll, I'll do it with that free.
Okay, great.
Could I, could I, could I do a ten for, uh, that two percent or whatever? Okay.
All right.
Very good.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sure you're used to.
The week, you have Suns and. Yes, San Diego, L A and San Francisco.
Is just a one paper copy? I just wanna have a paper, that's fine.
I don't know, why do you wanna?
Okay. I signed the one paper copy, at least, yeah, no.
Would you like your review of your sidewalks? It's gonna be very cool, actually.
I'll show you a adjournment so I can try to shut this thing off?
Yes.
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
Second. Motion is made to adjourn?
Aye.
Okay. This is all sent to you, you just need signature.